All right.
It'll be noted.
All right.
All right.
I'm not here.
Okay. So do we have any public comments?
Actually, staff report first.
Oh, staff report first. Okay, yes.
Public comments?
Public comments still before.
Oh, correct. Sorry, I'm sorry. We have public comments not on the agenda and then we'll go into the legislative.
Okay, do we have any public comments that are not on the agenda?
And if you want to make public comment, do you want to fill out?
Okay. All right. So.
Okay.
You have the floor.
All right. Thank you Vice Chair Gage. Tonight, I am providing a small PowerPoint presentation to go over the staff memo that is attached to the exhibit as an exhibit to the city commission, excuse me, the planning commission agenda. And this evening, this is the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Zoning and Code Amendments. In August, we had the initial meeting for the Beaver Creek Road zoning code amendments, which laid out kind of the overview, had the draft code attached. And now we're in the place where each planning commission meeting, there's specific topics. And as the hearings move through the fall, each topic will be identified, there'll be a staff report with some staff recommendations, and we'll be tracking those on the planning commission matrix. The goal is, as issues are brought up, they are ideally resolved by recommendations either through changes or keep as is, or new items are brought into the discussion and they'll be identified at future meetings. So to the point where as we move through the legislative process, the outstanding items get smaller and smaller and smaller to a place where the planning commission can make a recommendation to the city commission. So at each planning commission meeting, you'll, you can look at the commission report and you can see the updated calendar agenda for the topics. The topics for this evening are the zones, the zoning districts and some of the regulations related to that for the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area, the maps and home occupation. So I'll go through each of the items identified in the staff report. And what I'm looking for at staff now is you see staff's recommendations. So I think it was really at the end of the presentation, after public comments are taken, if there are any to this evening, really go through each item and see if there's any direction you can give back to me as staff. So if there's additional findings you want to add, I can put those into the additional planning commission findings as we get to a formal findings packet. Or if there are additional items you want to look into, or you may disagree with staff's recommendation, you want to have a larger, excuse me, conversation about any recommendations for code amendments. So that's kind of my goal as staff is to see if I can get direction from the planning commissions about the issues identified this evening. And if not, what are the next steps? I'm gonna, oops. Sorry, I need to turn on.
This one, use that one.
There you go. So as I defined, these were, these topics were identified for this meeting and I'm looking for directions on the items discussed. So the first item was the question about the southern property line setbacks and the northern property line setbacks. So the purpose of the increased setback at 40 feet on the southern border near Old Acres Lane at the residentially zone was to provide additional setbacks to save the grove of trees that are right on the southern property line near Old Acres Lane. So you can see two photos on the left, one is, they're both Google Maps, one is an area line, one is on Old Acres Lane. So the trees on your right on the upper photo are the, those existing trees at the property line. There were two additional red line clarifications that I'd like to add into the record. One is allowing roads to be in that setback. There is potentially an analysis that needs to be made at a future application if Timber Sky Way, which is the road on the other side of Beaver Creek Road, if that will have a corresponding street on the other side. It may be right in, right out, maybe not, but we want to make sure that streets and roads are allowed in that setback. So I've added that as well as accessory structures. Right now it is silent. And I want to make sure that single family property owners can choose to put accessory buildings in that 40-foot setback if they want to. And so those two red line code revisions clarify those two issues that are kind of silent. A, roads could be allowed in that 40-foot setback at the southern property line as well as accessory buildings as it relates to single family homes, though you would still need to retain the requirements of the buffering with the trees. So the northern property line is a little bit of a different animal. And so when we have, and there was a question of why a 25-foot setback was at the northern property line and a 40-foot setback was at the southern property line. And what this is, is really an apples oranges approach. So the northern property line looks at a qualitative, kind of looking at the quality of the buffer versus the quantity of the buffer because it goes through site plan and design review. You'll see in the, in the memo, it has requirements for a berm, fencing, additional landscaping, and areas where you could really put a very qualitative buffer right near the property line. It's a lot easier to regulate that over time, whereas on the southern property line being single family residential, it's much harder to regulate landscape bufferings once the house gets, you know, approved, the certificate of occupancy. So we really looked at a quantity of buffer on the southern end, knowing it's a single family housing district, looked at the quality of the buffer at the northern end, also knowing that this area is really constrained by the overhead power lines and some of the other issues related to kind of trying to place these campus industrial uses, which are generally inside buildings and not in large outdoor areas. How to really do the analysis to make sure we're not requiring extra setback above and beyond something that meets the purpose of providing a buffer. And this is a buffer for any abutting residential use, not just residential zone. So this would also be properties that are in the campus industrial zone but have an existing residential use. They may be county property that next door that's in the concept plan area but has not been, but still a residential use, they would have to have that same buffer. It's not the zone used to use.
I may have missed it in the conversation since we've gone along, or you may have just said no. Are electrical lines allowed to go over industrial areas over these buildings or is it just not over residential?
There, there, they have an easement that restricts buildings being placed under them. And so when you have the areas to the north, there's a lot of restriction of where the buildings can go. So a lot of the areas under the power lines will be things like roads and parking lots and maybe some storage areas, but it's all subject to the requirements of the BPA power line, which is why we're really sensitive about kind of what, how we can ensure that the setback meets the intent of providing buffering but not kind of having so much that you've, once again, keep reducing the ability to develop the buildings.
So to clarify, nothing over any of the industrial buildings?
The power line cannot, structures cannot be built under the power lines.
No, thank you.
There was another question about the definition, oh, sorry. So at this point, staff does not have any additional revisions. So I'll be looking for direction with planning commission on this issue. Definition of warehousing, there is a request to look at, we don't allow warehousing or whole, warehousing or distribution as a permitted use in this campus industrial zone in the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area because we wanted to make sure that these were high jobs producing developments. And there was a question of what about warehousing or distribution related to a building? And so right now it is our policy that distribution and warehousing of items constructed or assembled as part of the permitted use is permitted. So it really, what's not allowed is warehousing or distribution of things not assembled or constructed on site. That is not permitted in the district. So staff right now does not have any additional recommendations other than this is our existing, this is how we as a city interpret allowing warehousing and distribution with permitted uses. There was a map change request by Mr. Paul Edgar related to a property. And I kind of have the property sheet on your map on the left-hand side in a star, general area. And there is a request to rezone that to a residential zone. And so that area is a Title IV designated industrial area, which is a designation that looks at the region's ability to provide jobs and employment. And so any revision to, any rezoning of this area from campus industrial to residential require a map change through Metro and amendment to the Title IV process. Staff doesn't recommend that at this time because that would have to be done before any code changes could be adopted. And as this area was brought in for jobs and the Beaver Creek Concept Plan area was identified as a way to bring jobs, especially in this northern area, doesn't really meet the intent of the plan. And so rezoning this area really would be opening up not only the vision of the, of the plan, but also would require an additional process through Metro. So at this time, we don't recommend any rezoning of this area from an industrial zone such as campus industrial to a residential zone. There are new planning maps that have been identified, have been identified in the, we added to the record, the consultants' maps that were created through the spring where on purpose meant to kind of be seen as drafts, but as we're moving through the implementation process, the, we'll be moving and adopting a city map. So this is the beginning of that exhibits, those exhibits. And any revisions to the maps will be done as a city map. And finally, the, there was a request in 2016 in the readoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. And the city commission drafted staff to do a further analysis of issues related to expanding home occupation uses, home occupation uses in the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area, such as cottage manufacturing or housing within the mixed use and residential areas. And as part of the public outreach this spring, you can see in the, the planning's memo, there was additional outreach and some of our survey questions about would you support or would you, how would you recommend adding additional cottage industries into the home occupation license in the residential zone? And we didn't get a lot of feedback from this in writing and in the public open house meetings, open house meeting in April, we didn't have a lot of comments. We haven't had a lot of traction on this issue from the public. I did attach the home occupation business license form to our, your packet. Right now in Oregon City Business License, if you get a home occupation business license, you're allowed to, basically, you're allowed to provide services in your house as long as no, the only employees that live in the house are part of the business. Off-site employees can't come to the house as well as retail customers, though Pete, Walter and the code updates will identify a small change that we need to clean up in the code amendments that right now we remove the ability to not allow retail in our home occupation. And it was a purely grammatical error, so we're recommending that being brought back. But traditionally, no sales can happen on the site, no customers can come for retail sales, but people can come for services. And services can be things like accountant, yoga, hair appointments.
Chiropractic.
Chiropractic, things that you provide a service. So like you could have a, you could cut someone's hair, but you can't sell them shampoo. It's a good example because we, we often provide home occupation license for hairstylists who want to cut hair at home. And so that's where we draw the line, is you can't sell shampoo, but you can, you can cut the hair. So right now as a city, we do allow a fair amount of options. You can make things inside your house. We have a restriction on the size. Somebody at UPS can show up every day and you can mail out whatever you make. So really the, the things that we would look at with an expanded home occupation would be, would we allow employees to come to the site? Would you allow retail customers to come to the site? And would you allow the home occupation to have outdoor storage or outdoor activities? So if the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area wanted to, that would be kind of the additional things that could be added to a home occupation license, though it's not required and the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan doesn't, doesn't direct that that's part of the implementation, but that could be something that the, that the planning commission, city commission could look at. Through our outreach, we just didn't really see a lot of support either way for that. And so right now staff is not recommending any changes to the home occupation license, but kind of the three things you could look at is outdoor storage or outdoor activity in a single family residential area, customers coming to or employees coming to the site would be some things to look at. And once again, this is only for the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area because this is not looking at citywide changes.
One question that kind of comes up a lot is daycare. You're not selling a product, you're providing a service, but people are bringing their kids there. I saw that in my own neighborhood, people question, is that considered a service or what would that?
So daycare right now is allowed through home occupation license and there are state daycare provisions that we follow.
Do they have to have a license to operate that? Or are they just doing it for their neighbor friends? Is that legal?
There is a state daycare license procedures and we are required to follow that. So, and if you own a business in the city, you must get a business license. So I guess those are my two answers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So those are the overview of the items that were brought up for this evening. So I'm looking kind of for direction from the planning commission and all, as well as any other additional items you want to bring up. The items that are coming up in the September 23rd is the master planning requirement, once again, looking at clear and objective standards for housing and, and how we do that and implement this plan. I'll look at Upland Habitat and how that relates to our natural resource overlay code today, as well as just, there is a request for just a general overview of our geologic hazards code. And Josh Wheeler, our assistant city engineer, is actually going to come and make a small presentation about the geologic hazard code.
Oh, good.
So I'm looking forward to that. And so those are the three topics, plus anything else the planning commission wants to add. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay.
For lunch and dinner.
And we can have public comment as well.
Okay. Okay, um, we have two public comment forums here. And we'd like to limit comments to three minutes. And so the first person I've got is James Nacita.
Yes.
Correct? If you'd like to come on up?
Correct.
Previous commissioner.
Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. And good evening. I'm James Nacita. I live in Oregon City. And as Tom mentioned, I am a former city commissioner and was on the commission and this process got going way back in the day. And I wanted to bring to the commission's attention something that, as Christina mentioned, is on tonight's particularized agenda relating, relating to zoning and manufacturing and that type of matter. So back in 2011, and I, I have not found the minutes yet, but I will forward them to enter into the record and my registered commission to read the minutes and watch the video of that particular city commission meeting. We actually had a discussion and a vote on this whole issue of cottage manufacturing. To give some historical context, at the time of this, when this Beaver Creek Concept Road Planning Process was getting going, Blue Heron Mill had just closed. And so those of us, some of us on the commission were very concerned about the loss of jobs that had happened at the mill and the fact that originally the whole Beaver Creek Concept Planning Area was zoned industrial before, before it was rezoned and changed as part of this concept road planning. And we were a little uncomfortable about the fact that we were, you know, we were in this tension about wanting to preserve manufacturing jobs, but also wanting to advance goals of the concept plan. So during this one commission meeting, we voted, I think it was a three to two vote, to actually add more cottage manufacturing to the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan and Plan Process. Over the years, you know, I haven't been on commission several years, I don't know how it's evolved, but because there was a vote, I think as part of this planning process, there is a question that may be a legal question as to whether that vote was binding on this process. I think it was. And that's why I wanted the planning commission to become very familiarized with the vote we took that night. And it was, it was a generalized vote. We didn't have a lot of specific detail on what we were requesting, but because of the concern about what happened at Blue Heron and that the, you know, we had lost these jobs, we wanted a larger area to consider where we could have zoning, where people could actually make things. We could have actual manufacturing jobs restored in Oregon City and where we wouldn't have to, you know, people wouldn't have to commute half an hour to a job and they could live on the site. It was different than home occupation. It was not like, I mean, I'm a lawyer, I work out my house, so I, you know. But this was something different. This is where people could live on site and have maybe, you know, like a place where they could actually manufacture objects and sell them. And, you know, a lot of it has happened in the intervening, what, six, seven years since then, like this whole explosion of 3D printing, for example, which is, you know, fairly clean, non-polluting, or, you know, not, non-emissions producing, or at least to some extent. But it was that kind of idea where it wouldn't be just a mere home occupation, but where we would be small scale manufacturing with employees, but where the owner of the property and of the business could actually reside on site and be a part of the community as well. And so I will forward to Christina the link and those minutes so you all can, you know, as this process moves, moves forward, both read their minutes and the record and the videotape of that commission meeting and, and, you know, how we were struggling and what we thought, why would that be beneficial? So thanks very much.
Okay, thanks.
Was that, Jim, Jim, wait a minute. Was that planning commission meeting or county, city, county?
That was a city commission meeting. Yeah, it was in 2011, I believe.
I believe so. I remember that conversation stayed for a second, Jim. Wanted to ask Jim some questions about that. Jim, from what you heard from Christina Knight, being the residential and the industrial, I can't, I'm trying to remember myself, was that concerning having, like, I remember it was like woodworking, making candles, doing anything in your home? Was that what she was saying residential, or did you get the feeling that that was only small if you were the only person? I'm not quite sure I understand.
So I was kind of like walking over here and listening to the tape or to this meeting on my cell phone, so I probably didn't catch Christina's introduction tonight as, as, as more detailed, but I'll, I'll take a look at the videotape of tonight.
Maybe Christina could explain what he was discussing from that, you were around in 2011, like I was.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember.
But when you're discussing what can happen in residential, like no employees can come there, but did that preclude what he is discussing way back in 2011 about doing some manufacturing in your home, some woodworking projects or, let's say, glass, well, anything like that? Can you?
Yeah, I mean, these are residential zones. So we're kind of looking at like, how is a city, do we, do we add non-residential uses in a residential zone? Well, in Oregon City, we've typically done that through the home occupation license. So we have certain restrictions citywide. So really, as a community, if, is the home occupation license the right place to potentially amend in this area to have additional uses? Knowing that these are our five, you know, densities, what's the right type of uses that are compatible in the area and that, you know, you're going to get community support for? Having a hybrid, would the hybrid use would be like if you have this type of campus industrial uses permitted, but then you have to have it related to a residential? It's a kind of a hybrid we're not really set up for in the city. So, you know, my, my general approach would be to amend the home occupation license to allow other things, though there are potentially other ways to do it. I think the larger question, this is where I say like, this is, this is how you'd implement it, but I think the larger question is, in the residential R3.5, excuse me, R5 and R2 districts, what, would there be appropriateness to have any additional uses allowed beyond what's allowed today in the home occupation license citywide?
And currently you're saying there's not.
Well, as a staff, what I'm saying as a staff, as I look through the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, I look at the public engagement that happened this spring, I'm not seeing any, for any direction I'm hearing from the community and the plan that, that indicates anything beyond what's existing in our home occupation license. So that's why I don't have any recommendation today as staff, because what we have today in our home occupation license allows a lot of home uses. When you look at the R5 and the R2 district, what we heard from the community, I didn't hear a lot of support for customers coming to the site, outdoor storage or outdoor uses or employees coming to the site. And those are really some of the, regardless of the widget, those are really the, the reality of when you bring a hybrid use in and when is it, when is, where's the right place to put a, bring a hybrid use in? And so I'm kind of, at, at this point, I don't really have a staff recommendation because I'm not giving clear direction from the Beaver Creek Road Concept.
I'll be anxious to see what Jim puts forth from that 2011 meeting because probably a lot of people there at those meetings, I was at each of those meetings, I went to high school, and I don't think anybody ever knew about this 2011 meeting. I completely forgot about it myself.
So, yeah, I mean, let's, I think on a staff end, let's look at that. I'm unaware, the two, the concept plan was adopted in 2008.
Right.
So it's an adopted concept plan. So we'll take a look and see what, what the 2011 vote meant and.
Yeah, I just remember that myself.
What legal, uh.
The vote.
Yeah.
The legality of the vote or what it covers.
Legal consequences it has.
Quick question. For home occupation businesses, it mentions the occupant and then family members. The family members have to live there.
You can't, with today's home occupation license, people that don't live on site except for state licensed daycare, which has their own requirements, you have to live on the property to be able to be part of the home occupation.
So they would, anybody that lives on the property would be considered family?
Yeah.
Because the city doesn't define family.
No, we don't define family. So an example is if you run a landscaping company, your employees can't come in and check in with you in the morning.
Unless they live there.
Yeah, you can't do that. You have to meet out on the site.
Right, but your employees could live in your house.
Correct.
You could have 10 employees living in your house.
Correct.
Okay.
Big family. Put them to work.
And Jim would find a family. Does that suffice, Jim, to get you, to get us the information to?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, but I do want to, in response to your question, I just did, wanted to give you, give a couple of insights. After our vote in 2011, when we did the whole Willamette Falls Legacy Project Plan, I thought that master planning process was a good one in that, in the zoning for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Site, they actually, and I think it's called the Willamette Falls Zone in our current zoning ordinance, they actually created something new and creative where you can have kind of light industrial in that whole mixed use zone. I kind of think that might even be a model for what we were envisioning back when we were having that discussion in 2011. So I don't think we'd be creating something out of whole cloth. I think we might be taking that, at least as to what, to someone who was there at the time and what I had in, yeah, what we had in our head.
Till later.
I think it might, since then, it might be a fairly simple matter of taking what's in the Willamette Falls Zone for the Legacy Project and tweaking that somewhat to add, you know, maybe not, in having like manufactured cottage, cottage manufacturing as opposed to light industrial, you know, I think, I think light industrial is like kind of beyond what we were thinking. But kind of like, I don't know, light industrial light. I just, you know, something, something where the theme would be cottage manufacturing as opposed to light industrial. And I don't think that would be a, you know, I don't think that would be rocket science.
I remember that's where I first heard the name cottage was when you guys were discussing, or you commissioners were discussing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and, and the second comments from Elizabeth? And is it Grayson?
Grace her Lindsay.
Grace her Lindsay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could fully state your name and your, your place of residence.
Elizabeth Grace her Lindsay. I live in Beaver Creek. The people in Beaver Creek travel past this all the time.
Okay.
Um, when this area was originally brought into the urban growth boundary, the idea was to have it be for industry and to have jobs, but the, um, concept, um, changed from that and went a lot into residential. And as a result, um, Luba remanded that at one point in time. I don't know that that's being mentioned anymore. So, I've been pretty interested in the job aspect, um, being strengthened as much as possible. The city benefits by having, um, industry, because, uh, jobs and business bring more money into the city, but when you have a lot of residential, it costs more money to the city, because you have to provide a lot of services. So, you benefit by the more jobs that you have. Um, a, a problem that we, um, have to face with the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan is even though there's quite a bit of, um, well, there's land in the north for industry, we do know we have the power line problem up there, but, um, there isn't anything that's happening to make sure the jobs come in before the residential. It'd be ideal if the jobs were there and then people get those jobs and they aren't commuting out of the area. Um, so, one benefit of the cottage industry, or, um, what Jim Nacita was talking about, where that's greatly strengthened, is that could help get the jobs going, um, with the residential, rather than having residential and then this big delay until the, um, more industrial part builds out. Um, it, it could be a good idea to actually try to sequence that, but so far, I haven't heard the staff recommending anything to do that. So, it's, um, not only having, um, business and, and, um, cottage industry being in the residential area, that helping the city financially, it also helps with reducing the traffic congestion if you don't have as many people commuting out of the area. Um, so, my interest is to see that the home occupation isn't so service-oriented, where you're mostly doing paperwork or small things, but they actually can have the trades involved. And I, um, think that there's some challenges to doing that. Um, some of them are about sound. If it's known upfront that this is a area where residential's gonna be, um, complementary with, um, people's work and their trades, then you could think about code provisions to make, uh, this compatible between neighbors and that people who moved into that particular neighborhood would be aware of what kind of neighborhood they're moving into. But it's possible that when the staff is wanting to change the citywide code for home occupation, that, that works against this area having the best situation, because in other areas, people are used to what they have, so they don't want their neighbor necessarily to be doing business. So, there might be a place for having a special consideration of jobs for this particular part of the city. Um, so, that needs to be thought about upfront. Um, so, because if people are gonna develop, um, homes that are gonna have jobs in them, they most likely would design the homes in a different way than if it's just a home where someone's gonna live. I mean, the person who's occup, who's operating the business probably doesn't really want to use their garage for the business. Maybe they'd actually like to have a place that's designed for where they do the, the, um, trades-type work. Um, an example that I ran into personally is my brother-in-law, who used to live in Oregon City, he's since passed on, but he was a, um, energetic person who wanted to, you know, start a business, but he didn't have the kind of money to go rent a building, because he just had a few jobs coming in. So, he was trying to do welding in his garage, and I think he had kind of a working-class neighborhood in Oregon City, so that people didn't complain, but really, your code didn't really allow that. So, it seems like this is like the perfect place to be a, a business incubator for people who are creative and wanna get the city to have way more businesses and, you know, grow them, not just try to attract them in from other cities, but grow them here. Um, one thing I've noticed is that in the rural areas, we have a lot of overflow of businesses who otherwise would fit well in the city. They, they have no reason to be in the rural areas, but the, the city's code doesn't, um, provide for them to be here. So, there are hundreds or thousands of, um, of home occupations in the county, not the type that she's talking about, but ones where people operate all kinds of, um, businesses, where they have equipment. And if you look through that county list of home occupation, um, you would learn a lot about the kinds of jobs that people wanna start and that they could have those jobs in Oregon City if you let them.
Just like to make a comment, a comment about Elizabeth. You know, I've been involved with this Beaver Creek Concept Plan since it first started. It's the first time I ever, you ever brought up a situation, or I ever heard of, that what's gonna come first, the industrial or the homes? And I think you're right, I might never seen that in anything. And I'm not sure what, what the city has planned, if they're gonna start the industrial park, get it going so there's jobs for those homes that we're gonna build, or for the homes that are gonna be first. I hadn't even thought of that in all these years that I've been involved in it. Do we have any idea, Laura, or is that just something that's, we're not sure about yet?
The property can develop at the time, property owners want to develop it, which means that the city is not saying one has to develop it before the other. The jobs are on the northern piece, and that's where there is more infrastructure, so it might be cheaper to develop on the north. We also know we have property owners who want to develop on the south as well. Um, so, no, we don't have a provision that says one has to go before the other.
Not has to, but preferred or something.
I mean, we don't, in our regulations now, you have to meet all the criteria to develop, as long as you can have adequate infrastructure to serve, you can develop.
I had never even thought about that before, and you're, you're right, that would be good to have jobs to attract people to buy those homes. Hadn't thought about it.
There'll be another analysis when, like, say, for example, the homes come in, because you have to make sure that you have enough transportation system to meet those homes, and some of that transportation goes through the job area, and some of that, um, utilities go through the north. So, it's all a little bit connected, so, more to come.
I understand that. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
A follow-on question here. Can you split a home occupation into the order-taking end of it being within the Beaver Creek Concept Plan? That's their residence, and their job is to take orders. It's kind of a version of internet-
Yeah.
That they don't manufacture the products there, but as you suggested, it could be manufactured someplace in rural Colquhoun County. And, and there would be where the work is done. Would, would this still function properly with the home occupation? The home occupation is take the order, refer it on to the manufacturer, wherever it is where it's legal and to do, and they get their order placed.
I think Elizabeth was suggesting that, uh, some of those people do their stuff outside the city, because they couldn't get a license inside the city.
Right, that, that's correct. And it's a disadvantage to have it in the rural areas, because that means there's a lot of driving going on when the job actually belongs, it's, it's an urban job. It's an urban, uh, construction of things that are gonna be used in town. So, we don't really want to be filling the roads up with people who are driving out there just to get to a place where they're allowed to do it.
Right, but, but at the same time, if they don't have that flexibility to take order here and produce it here, neither one of them will function. And, and you haven't gained anything for home occupation. Driving, yeah, there's a, I, I see the increased traffic.
I got ahead of-
Do you take a little increased traffic to get the function set up legally?
Yeah, so to summarize the city provisions, again, you, we do allow home occupations. Under home occupations, you can create the widget on-site, it just needs to be indoors, it can't be outdoors. So, um, you can do things like that. You can, you can't sell it from your site, and you can't have people come over, um, to work at your site. And so, those are some of the questions that during this process, we've reached out to the public to say, tell us more about what does cottage manufacturing mean, and what, what are the barriers in our code to allowing it, and should we change some of those barriers for just this area? And we certainly can. Um, we're just not hearing a lot of feedback from the public of, yes, we wanna be able to sell the widget from this property, as opposed to online or in a storefront or something like that, or yes, we want people to come over, or yes, we want the welding to be done outside, because you can weld inside now under our current home occupation license.
I think a lot of people from the meetings I attended haven't wrapped their whole minds around the whole concept yet, because they're, they're concerned about traffic, they're concerned about their impacts on their neighbors, and the issues like you brought up or you brought up are things they hadn't even thought about yet. I hadn't yet until she mentioned it, but I think as this moves forward, if we have more meetings, maybe there's gonna be more people now aware of it, especially if these are brought up at those meetings.
Yeah, we did reach out through, um, these efforts to gauge what the public was thinking about this, but it certainly was a topic, um, at the initial adoption, then again at the re-adoption of the concept plan as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, um-
I'm gonna have a comment on that.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, so, um, I just looked it up, because I couldn't remember the details, but in the specific duties of the planning commission, there's eleven specific bulleted items. Four of them have to do with encouraging industry and encouraging businesses to be brought to the city or to be started, or something to that effect. Um, we need to be encouraging that, and limiting people's ability to do work that they want to do productively within their home is antithetical to that. Um, so, as much as we can liberalize, that's the wrong word, as much as we can, uh, expand the ability to permit people to, to do things in their home, to make things, to sell things, to have customers over, it doesn't make any sense why a person could come for a haircut and I couldn't sell them a bottle of shampoo, because it's related to the service that is provided.
Right.
If we can fix all that, it would be, we should do that. That's all.
Okay.
Good point, good point.
Along that same line, are we, we have home occupations today, and we're gonna have home occupations in Beaver Creek. Is there a desire to make both of those the same, so it's the same in all the rest of the city?
You mean the coding?
Pardon?
You mean the coding for businesses, is that what you're referring to?
For, for having a legal home occupation that sells makes or whatever, or do we want to have two separate codes? Something different for Beaver Creek than the rest of the city?
Well, I can tell you right now, we've noticed the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan code changes for just areas inside the Beaver Creek Road Boundary. So, today, you're only making changes for Beaver Creek, but you can have a larger conversation about a future code amendment if the intent is to make it for later. But right now, this process is just amending, uh, zoning for properties located in the boundary.
But that'd be part of the updates, the comprehensive plan, um, combining those different ones?
Sure, yeah, I mean, you could have discussions about future citywide changes, but what this project can't do is affect property outside the boundary of the concept plan area and make some changes.
To answer your question, um, directly too, um, if we want a separate definition for home ox plus cottage industries in the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area, we can do that. We have no preference. We just wanna understand, what are the barriers that you can't do now that we want people to do? We're just not getting a lot of feedback, but this is certainly-
So, like obnoxious-
As somebody who helps, what's that?
So, like obnoxious, um, noise or, or odors and things like that, those are the kind of barriers in a R5, R2?
Well, I mean, when I think about it from the zoning perspective, too, having people over, doing things outside, um, selling goods, so are those okay in a residential, in this residential area? Let us know.
So, no lemonade stands for little kids, because that's outside.
Yeah, usually, uh, things like noxious and, uh, the more clear and objective we can have our permitted uses, the better we are as a city, because when the inevitable code enforcement complaint comes in, we can look at clear and objective criteria to indicate if the neighbor, because we do not wanna be between two neighbors, if, you know, if the neighbor is meeting the zoning requirements or not meeting the requirement. And so, um, I'm always, probably along with Ms. Richter, will be, you know, whatever we do, like, how do we make sure that future code enforcement that comes in for the use, do we have, have clearly defined it enough so we know when something does or does not meet the requirements?
Okay, I got a couple of questions. Um, okay, I'll do home occupation businesses. I can, I can picture that, somebody has a garage, someone has a, a room in their house, they're making jewelry, you know. That makes sense, but when we start talking about the cottage, what are we talking about? Cottage housing, cottage manufacturing? Is it like a, a public space that we share? What's different about the cottage housing with manufacturing?
Not cottage, cottage industry, you mean?
Cottage industry, okay.
So, I think it's looking at, um, cottage industry is really, you know, you're, you're producing the, the product, it's usually a startup, it's all in-house, and it may, you're producing the widget on your property and potentially even selling. And so, it's a small commercial business on the, the property.
But do the neighborhoods look different?
Yeah, and so I think this is the crux of where I'm looking for direction as staff, because right now, we have a R5, you know, residential district, which allows our numacy middle housing, yeah, so our duplexes and our, you know, our, uh, and potentially our, you know, threeplexes and our single-family homes and our cottage housing, and all permitted uses. But then, at what point, with kind of the 5,000 square foot average density, what is an appropriate type of, uh, business that is compatible with that area where people want to move in, because they may have a business, but they also wanna be that person's neighbor at the same time? So, it's that, how do we allow and encourage, as we said, the industry, but acknowledge, you know, this isn't two-acre lots? So, where's that magic, uh, place where we are encouraging business, but we're acknowledging our impacts to our neighbor? And how do we do it in a clear, objective way, so the city doesn't get caught in neighbor battles?
Right.
I would presume that when you start doing the, um, the license coding for things like that, um, doing certain types of industry, I know we're gonna have R5s and some R2s, but when you're looking at some of the buildings we looked at, where there's maybe two or three floors, you're gonna probably, gonna limit what kind of businesses can be above, and where apartments are, is that something?
Yeah.
In the bottom.
Right, but if they're having cottage industries in a building, like, right now, some of them are saying you can't even have a barbecue, because they're afraid for the other residents.
And that's, that's, that may be privacy C and R is related to, uh-
So, that would be covered in that.
So, I think that the difference is, like, um, our campus industrial zone and this, the mixed-use quarter-two zone does allow, and actually, the mixed-use quarter-two zone is probably closer to what the Willamette Falls Downtown District Zone is. It's a mixed-use zone, allows commercial, allows residential, and we actually allowed some additional campus industrial uses, we talked about. That's kind of a little bit of that hybrid zone as we go down Beaver Creek. So, that one is probably closer aligned to the Willamette Falls Downtown District. It allows all these different uses, and you can do residential, but it's only if in combination with jobs, because once again, we don't want. So, in the more strictly residential zone of R5 and R2, so that's apartments in kind of R5 subdivisions, 5,000 square foot lot subdivisions, where, what type of additional job, your type of additional, um, uses, job uses would be compatible with that? And what could we allow in addition? And I think as we kind of talked about, one, to me, the way I'm thinking about it, is we wouldn't say, we usually look at more impacts, we don't play like, you can make this type of widget, but that, not that type of widget. We say things like size. So, right now, our home occupation license has, um, it's, it's ancillary, right, secondary to the main single-family. So, there's a size limitation. So, you couldn't, you know, be living in, in your closet and have the rest of your house be the, the business. So, do we change the size limitation? So, maybe there's more, that you can do more of the business as a percentage of the house than you could other parts of the city. Do we allow things to happen outside, still knowing you're in 5,000 square foot lot neighbors? Do we allow customers to come? Do we put limits on when they come? Do we allow employees to come? Do we put limits on how many employees? So, those are kind of very clear and objective things we can do, rather than you can make this widget or not that widget. Those are the kind of, how we, it would, how we can regulate in a very clear and objective manner.
So, this, I have always, as usual, a lot of questions. So, on some of the buildings we looked at in downtown, on the designs here, where they have a second, third, maybe a fourth floor, that's not, I know with all the affordable housing, that's not just necessarily gonna be residential. Some of those on the second or third floor could be offices, and right next to a residence?
Yeah, and that's a mixed-use zone, which is different than a residential zone, where the primary use is residential.
So, you could have a residence and right next to an, an office of some sort, and then a residence on the other side.
Correct. And I think what Mr. Nacita was kind of, and I- Correct. And I think what Mr. Nocita was kind of, trying to translate, he was kind of saying, we've been thinking about these as single-family zones, the R5 and the R2, is there more of a mixed-use zone for this area as well?
Okay.
I don't know. That is not how we went about implementing because we looked at kind of what are the existing city zones? How do we look at bringing industrial to the identified areas, helping jobs identified areas? And so to me, the implementation I think is best done through the home occupation license because it's still, and it's, at the end of the day, it's still a residence, an R zone, it's a residential zone. So this is an ancillary or supportive use. So it's still attached to the residential as the primary use. So the home occupation makes sense. But, you know, we're looking for direction from you. I think the key thing for us on staff level is we reached out for the survey. We didn't hear a lot. I do have over 200 people on my eBlast, so our people following this. So as this moves forward in the fall, I think continuing, bringing it up so we have more people understand kind of what the issues are, so they can chime in as kind of this issue gets.
On a continuation of that. So it's the developers that do the planning, like of the buildings, what they want in the homes, the developers. So in the project of the code, did the city direct that or did the developers say, we're going to have this and we want these kind of businesses here? Or did the city just allow the code to do?
Well, and I'm not privy to the code, and so I would use...
That's a major project, so I was wondering.
Yeah, that's a city project. These development, we are responding to development applications, right? And so if someone wants to come in and just do only one permitted use and that's allowed, then we approve it based on the criteria. So we're, as I always remind, we are setting the table for development to come, but development is going to propose the uses and proposals based on what the code allows. And we will review it based on the requirements. So if it's a goal to add additional opportunities or just allow, allow job opportunities outside the existing home occupation process, then that's something that can be done. But it's not, you could end up having this and no one actually takes advantage of it or there's just two people. So we're allowing opportunities, we're not regulating that, that, that this is a development where every house has this because that's the private sector would determine, you know, how those houses get built. Every person who moves in would determine if they wanted to have that type of, you know, home occupation.
So question on that then, how do we address that here? Do we discuss that here and come up with a recommendation for you?
Well, I think what I'm looking for tonight for all of these questions are, do you feel that you have enough information to provide direction back to staff? And if there's not concurrence with direction, what's your recommendation for staff to provide additional, additional information at a following meeting? So I'm kind of thinking of, do we have concurrence? And if not, what are the next steps to get concurrence on the issues identified?
For the public that watches on community television, can you explain to them the difference between what the concept plan is? I mean, what does that control? We developed for years, concept plan, and now you just said that developers can kind of direct it. So I think people are confused. Well, the city has a concept plan, don't the developers have to meet that? And so could you explain to them?
Yeah, so a concept plan is that 20,000-foot vision. It's big picture. It's looking at, I call it the watercolor map. These are generally the types of uses. Now we're creating, implementing zoning and planning here at all the different options. So if you look at the campus industrial zone, here's a list of nine or 10 permitted uses. Well, if I'm a, if I'm a, somebody coming in, if I'm a business owner or a developer and I want to build a building, I have a use. I check to see if it's a permitted use. Great, good, I'm in the right zone. And I look at the development standards. Okay, these are all the requirements. I can build that. Okay, do I have enough? Can I bring the infrastructure to my site? I can, and they can build. So what zoning doesn't do is it doesn't determine the type of business. We can't say a Walgreens is moving in here. We can, all we can do is provide the permitted uses for the zone, the requirements of what the buildings need to look like, the outsides, the architectural design to the extent that the community wants to design it, and where it may be placed on the site, and what are the requirements for the infrastructure. So the vision is that, you know, we, we look at what we would like, we look at how, then we look at, well, what code will get us there? But then each development application, it's, it's their job to look to see if what they want to build can be met. And that is when we say, we take a look at development as it comes in and can it meet the requirements of our zoning code and meet, build the infrastructure needed.
Thank you. Good description.
And Mr. Nocita, would you like to approach?
Thank you. Listening to all this, you know, after all these years, word like triggers a memory and what was going on at the time. So just some more insights and maybe a suggestion or a proposal. When Christine was just talking about, you know, R5 and R2 and the ancillary use of home occupation, it kind of reminded me that back then, when we were conceptualizing this, we were kind of like turning it upside down and that really the, being able to live there was kind of almost ancillary to providing, you know, more industrial use or cottage manufacturing houses. So it might be that as this proceeds, keep in mind not necessarily kind of like putting this in the peg of residential zoning. And that's why I was saying that this really needs to be a new animal and maybe that the legacy project, maybe the MUC zoning too or comp plan designation. But, but the emphasis that we were thinking about was not on the residential, it was on the manufacturing and the manufacturing types. So then getting to the points that Laura was raising too, and Christina also about the outreach. So the, as far as I know, the outreach was to Oregon City residents. Is that correct? So maybe, maybe there needs to be some research and outreach to people that aren't in Oregon City, but who would want this type of model and who would we want to entice into Oregon City based on this special zoning that would allow them to do what perhaps they can't do in their city right now? You know, try to give us a competitive advantage on, that would draw people to Oregon City. And the last thing, as far, you might want to, as far as direction, it might be an idea for a research project to try to get some examples of this kind of manufactured, you know, cottage manufacturing and residential mixing. Because I'm sure it's out there and it might give you some insights on urban design, on zoning, comp plan, et cetera. And I do have a recollection that early on in the Beaver Creek concept process, Sarah Architects was involved somehow. I remember talking with the director of Sarah, his name was Tim something, Christine, remember?
Yeah, he was with the Park Place Concept.
Tim Smith.
Tim Smith.
Sarah had some kind of like environmental specialty or, and they, they had this whole idea of, of this kind of like new thinking on jobs and residential. And I don't know if he'd be amenable to giving a presentation on that, but I think that he would be someone who could really give you kind of like some nuts and bolts problem solving on this too.
And Sarah was S E R R A, wasn't it?
Sarah is S E R A. I think it's an acronym for something, but I don't remember.
Yeah.
It's S E R A.
So you didn't read down it. Sarah, like a woman.
Oh, no, I did. S E R R A is what I, I like, I like that idea. Is that something?
Well, I'm sure there is a cost to that, to the city to have somebody come in and address it, but.
Yeah. I mean, yes, I don't think Mr. Smith's going to come in on it so on time. But I think what I'm hearing, maybe I can summarize on this issue and we can go back to the others. One thing I wanted to bring up, I think is, this is like a big stew, we gotta like stew everything around and see what the issues are. We also have the CCNR issue. I know we dealt with that as with equitable housing with, these are covenants and restrictions that private development can put on things. And so whatever we adopt is permitted, we definitely have to take a look to see, is this something that we would allow the market to choose as an option or to require the market to implement? And so that, that's that conversation about what's that balance of providing an option or requiring it as an implementation tool? And, you know, you, cities have been, very specifically, they've chosen when they want to not allow CCNRs to restrict things further. And then there's other things as a city that we allow them to restrict further and so for development. So that's some of that conversation is what are providing more options and what are requiring to be developed? And that's stew of the conversation.
Or CCNR is controlled by the development?
Those are privately controlled.
By the private, they don't get run by the city.
Correct.
Each one could have their own specific.
The only thing we look to as a city is, are you, are you allowing or not requiring something that contradicts our city?
Right.
But if you're further restricting something, that's okay. So like if we have a 15-foot setback and you want a 20-foot setback, you know, that's something a CCR can provide. So that's just something to add to the mix of what's, you know, because that's two other additional ways to look at it.
So if we do go ahead and we're successful in making some of the changes like we're talking about tonight, the CCNRs would have to follow what the city already says. You said they can further restrict, but can't we put some kind of a restriction on their restrictions?
Yeah, so we as a city have to, I mean, I would work with our city attorney to see when there's things we can't. But, you know, I know with equitable housing, we chose the things we wanted to allow to be further restricted through CCNRs and we, were things that we said, no, you cannot do that. And so we would have that same type of analysis of what would we provide more option to the market, what would we want to actually enact? And then, I think that's just adds to the stew of these conversations. So I think what I would like, what I'm hearing is you're interested in learning more about additional industrial uses allowed in this residential area.
I think so.
What I'd like to get some direction is what a, what a, maybe more details or what kind of additional things do you want us to provide more research and come back for?
Number one, I think we just need to just see what happened in 2011 when the city commission voted.
Yeah, and that can do that.
And that would kind of drive, I think, some of our conversation. What did they approve at the time when they were looking at the Beaver Creek Concept Plan? But yeah, probably, I agree with all of you down there, that we need to look at more industrial to make it. We need more jobs in the city, obviously.
Right.
Okay, one other question. So going back to CCNRs, if a neighborhood decided, okay, this is really wrecking our neighborhood, we can't even park anymore, could people get together and restrict allowed uses?
No, usually you do it before the homes are sold.
So if a developer wanted to restrict uses, could they? Or could the city say you cannot restrict the?
Both are options.
They may want to think about doing that.
It's filed with the state. It's usually filed with the state, like in our neighborhood.
So what Christine is talking about?
We can't put RV in our driveway, we got stuff like that.
Within the equitable housing project, we put a provision in our code that says if you have CCNRs, you can't say no corner duplexes are allowed because we wanted that on the menu. And if we had big subdivisions that just said, don't do it, then it's effectively off the menu. And so what Christine is saying is, in this process too, if we create a, some type of cottage industry, we will be thoughtful to know, can we legally put it on to say you can't restrict this cottage industry, it has to be allowed. So we'll look into it, is what.
So CCNRs are controlled by homeowner association generally, it's an ongoing process?
Yeah.
So that restriction, that sounds like something would be more of a deed restriction that you're prohibiting.
So we review the CCNR, so we would make sure the CCNRs didn't state it when it's established.
But is there a prohibition against the developer putting a restriction on the deed that this property will only be a single-family or whatever?
I can't recall the details of our conversation.
Yeah. So I'm going to put any blanketed legal, state of Oregon, federal legal things over here.
Sure.
Beyond, outside of that, you know, it's a, it's a conversation we want to do as a city. What things we want to allow as an option that allow private development to choose?
Right.
And what things as a city do we want to take that next step further and say, no, that has to be an option to anybody who lives there.
Okay. So do all CCNRs go through the city, the city review?
The only, we have a cursory review before plat to make sure that they are not doing anything that is...
Contrary.
Contrary to what? So if you want to further restrict things, once again, it's not illegal and it's not something we've said that you can't do, then you're allowed to. So if you want to say you have to put up Christmas lights every December and there are CCNRs and do that, we do not get involved with that. We are not the, the, that, we don't get involved in that piece of it.
The biggest provision that we've seen through the years when we look at CCNRs is when some subdivisions say you need a five-foot fence in your front yard and we only allow three-and-a-half-foot fences in your front yard.
Oh.
So those are the kind of things.
Yeah, or paint colors.
So, yeah, so we're just looking to see, does it tell someone they have to do something that we don't allow?
Yeah.
So the CCNRs, even as far back as 2003 and my subdivision, the city hasn't reviewed them? Because I know ours were boiler, boilerplate CCNRs, and now everybody's wanting to change it, but we have to go through a lot of legal to change.
And that's privately, you can. We were just looking to make sure you were not restricting something that you legally could not.
Okay, and that's coming through the developers of the HOA?
Yeah, yeah. So we do a cursory review. Are you restricting something that you're not allowed to? No, take it back, you record it.
Good to know.
Yeah.
But going forward, if the HOA decides to put in a restriction that is otherwise prohibited, how is that prevented from?
They have to have a vote of the citizens or the...
Not the citizens. I understand, but how does the city prevent them from putting that restriction in three years later that they couldn't put in when they did subdivision?
Well, we'll take a look. It's in our subdivision provisions, so we'll have to see how amending it later when you're not doing a subdivision applies.
Yeah.
Good question.
So, okay, overall, just to summarize, it sounds like we want to investigate ways in which we want to encourage more cottage industrial, figure out what that means a little bit more, and so we'll come back to you with something. Do we need more direction from them?
Is there any of the things I kind of talked about, like outside employees, outdoors? I mean, any of those factors where there's something that you were really more interested in or you just want to kind of?
Does the city have a definition for cottage industries or what you just?
No, we would probably adopt one as part of this process.
So what you just said about employees coming and going and this and that?
I'm looking at the Merriam-Webster dictionary right now.
Would that take an entire new coding process for just that cottage industries in that Beaver Creek area?
We would probably create a new definition. We would create new requirements. Either it would be attached to the home occupation license or, as Mr. Nocita was talking, just a whole different hybrid approach. But we would have new definitions and new descriptions of what, once again, that clear and objective. Because the person who puts their business also wants to know that what they envision is allowed by the city. So transparency is really important in this process because you don't want to have people invest in their house or the business and then they had, did not understand what was being required. So on my staff end is, you know, think of me, think of the staff, think of this, you know, think of the property owner, think of the neighbors. We need to be really clear and objective about whatever we choose to allow so everyone knows the rules.
Do those codes become a part of the comprehensive plan or are they part of the codes?
Well, we're implementing the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. So we're adopting code that implements it. And if, if, if this city commission, I mean, this planning commission, city commission want to further promote cottage industries in these areas, then we would adopt a definition and adopt regulating code, but right now only for the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area. Over time, especially through the comprehensive plan process, if there are things that are allowed in here that we want to allow citywide, that would be a separate process.
Christina, I go back a ways, but Christina, are we starting to set one where we have a code for Park Place, a code for Beaver Creek, and a code for South End that are all maybe a little bit different, but you're having to set up three different, separate kinds of codes for each?
Well, we started with trying to identify corollary city districts for this area, and we have. And so what I'm always looking at is what do we minimally have to change in order to implement the plan? So if there are things, so what you're seeing tonight with the setbacks and the, you know, and our permitted uses for the zones and those subareas, that's a staff's reading through the plan and looking at the provisions and the goals and policies that we think is needed to implement it. And then there is this question about cottage industry that's been here through this public engagement, and we just didn't have a lot of direction either from the plan or from the public outreach. And so that's why at these meetings, we're looking for further direction. So if, if the planning city commission do feel that those additional measures are needed, then that is further, you know, this is just another further code that is implementing the plan.
So what is consistent with the?
It's part, it's implementing. It's part, it's implementing the comp, the concept plan, which is an ancillary document to the comprehensive.
And one way, it's okay if our code says only in this area, you can do something different. That's what the concept plan allows us to do, and we have other places where we do it as well. So like under mixed use downtown, we have a special provision for a downtown design district. It's okay to do. We don't, we don't have to have a one-size-fits-all.
Yeah.
The reason I asked was because, as my fellow commission probably don't know, in Park Place, one of the parts of the concept plan way back when was they wanted alleyways, they didn't want front, uh, garages, they want everybody going behind. But recently this year, uh, the developers came in and wanted that to be reversed. They didn't want those, because it does take up land to have those. And so I read, when I was reading through the notes of that, that a lot of people commented they didn't want alleyways up in Beaver Creek, and they wanted mainly streets. And I'm going, so it sounds like you're having to direct something just for Park Place. This is just for Beaver Creek.
Yeah, well, they're all three concept plans and they're all different, and each one had a different little vision. And so alleys are mentioned in Beaver Creek, so we didn't pursue that. So yes, in some sense, each of the three concept plan areas are going to be implemented slightly different, different, because they all three had different visions. I think on our staff end, we're just trying to unify our code to a level of we're not making extra complexity when it's not needed. So whenever there needs to be additional code, just what's the purpose for it? And that's just kind of reduce complexity when not needed.
Well, it sounds very complicated for you, and I keep thinking of her book, which she carries, and it's going to get bigger and bigger with all the, all the plans and codes she has to follow.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I've got more thoughts on the, on the home manufacturing. I noticed that he's trying to simplify it as much as possible, making criteria that's easy to, you know, easy to, to read and decide does the business meet it or not, but there is nothing simple about a home business. One person can be doing something outside that doesn't bother any neighbor, and another person can be doing something inside that is completely inappropriate. Like, I don't know if you ever heard someone run an angle grinder all day for a year, but you wouldn't want that even indoors next to your house, or someone that's spray painting furniture outside all the time. So is there going to be any discretion when somebody applies for a business permit? Or is it going to be nothing but continuous nuisance complaints?
Yeah, I, I can talk to our city attorney and our code enforcement about how we can provide clear and objective code for nuisance and how we best approach that. But discretion is not a type one process, as you know, and type, and this, business licenses are an over-the-counter type one worksheet approach, so.
Yeah.
We need to create clear and objective standards and.
It's gonna be tough.
And I'll look at.
One person's gonna say, well, my neighbor can do this, why can't I do that? And, you know, well, yours smells worse and, you know, it's.
You can start that marijuana grow operation in your backyard.
So I, I can provide a little more, um, background on how we do have, how we try to have a clear, objective approach to nuisance and how that's worked so far. I mean, I, I'm not an expert on it, so I can provide it. I just know that we can't be writing discretionary code for home occupation or just regu, any business license.
Okay. It seems like it's gonna be a different, difficult proposition to write.
So one other thing I'd like to bring up, Commissioner Stole had mentioned earlier about retail, if you can do haircuts, why can't they sell a shampoo? I, I'd like to see some, something available, maybe on a limited basis for retail, maybe not where you have traffic coming with, you know, 50, 100 people a day coming to pick up product, but maybe it limits the number of trips that can come to your, your home a day to, for a pickup of a retail item.
Yeah, usually would be that, or maybe the limit the size of the retail part, so we could limit like the retail space, because you can't, it's hard to limit how successful a company is.
Right, right.
So, sorry, once you get successful, people get cut. So you, usually you could, you could limit like the retail part of the business, and we do that in like our, uh, campus industrial zones, limited.
Okay.
To a sort of size. Uh, you could also limit customers to hours.
Right.
You know, time and place, but you probably couldn't say you can only have seven customers a day, but that's where it gets a little bit harder.
Could you just write it so that the, the retail is concurrent with the service visit?
Yeah, and like, but you can say like it can't be more than, um.
Well, no, just if they come in for a service, they can buy something.
As long as it's ancillary, a lot like, um.
Well, there's just concurrent, same, same.
Same thing that we talk about warehousing and, um.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah, and a distribution. Okay, so any other direction for staff about additional?
Not this time for me.
Okay.
Anybody else?
One thing I do, I mean, I, I will do more research on kind of that flip conversation. That would be a, it's more of an industrial zone and retail's allowed or part of it rather than a residential zone, and I'll see what, you know, I can find for options. I mean, it's definitely a different approach than what, um, we were looking at and, and what are the opportunities and also unintended consequences of that flip.
Or Pete, have you ever found what you're looking for? We've been watching the screen go up and down because we see all the stuff.
I'm looking for that section on, uh, CCNRs.
I've seen so many of your files.
So I think I have good information on the cottage industry, but we could go back to the other ones, maybe we can go back up to.
And do we have the list somewhere?
Yeah, I'll go back to the PowerPoint. I just screwed up, sorry.
I'm hoping that Jim will be able to find that information for us before the next meeting.
Hang on.
And I can add it in the record at the next meeting.
Great.
Um, and I just screwed up and pressed the wrong thing.
And I will get, come back to your PowerPoint.
Okay, so we want to go the first one, the first. Yeah, so we'll do. So the southern property line is that first question. Right now, staff just has those two recommended red lines, um, so let me know if there's anything else you want to subscribe to that.
Protect existing older trees. So those trees will be protected at?
Yeah, it looks, you basically protect it or you gotta plant more. I mean, as always, we, we provide both options, and then we have that larger setback, because single-family housing is a lot harder to regulate the quality.
Who protects those trees? I mean, if it's part of a personal property.
We can put a, a covenant on the property at the time of development.
Okay, because as you know, in Park Place, they cut down most of the trees except for one small stand, so I was wondering, if it's personal property, how can you protect them?
Well, I think that's why we set it up. If it, if it's, if those trees are taken up before land use application, there's a lot of trees you gotta plant back, or you keep the trees, which I'd recommend, the property that they're doing, and then those have a covenant restriction on them, and then you have that additional setback. And those are, those are restrictions at the time of like a subdivision application that are placed on the property.
And I, I suspect there'd be a tremendous difference of opinion if we had the neighbors across Old Acres driveway or roadway. I drove down there today and, you know, it's a, it's a great buffer that's already in place, you don't have to plant new trees, and you have it already built in. And, and I don't think you'll find any neighbors across the street that complain about those trees being there.
Well, see, there's nobody behind them on that side, and that's what we said in Park Place and argued about, and that some of the commissioners understood. They were cutting down all the trees, but we were told that's private property, the city cannot tell them that they can't cut them down, and this is private property right now owned by those people. So the city could not direct them, that you can't cut it down.
We're writing provisions so that you can't cut them down.
And there was no provisions in Park Place.
Yeah, and if you do, you gotta replant a lot of trees.
Couldn't you cut them down right now?
They could, but the, the idea is we're trying to option A or B is if you do, then here are all the additional trees you gotta plant.
They did in Park Place.
I don't think they have zoning designation yet.
Yeah, and they, they don't, they have, they have a, they're not in a land use application and they're, they don't, because they have a county zone right now.
It's complicated at the moment.
If the golf course wanted to chop them down, they could.
Right, and that's why.
I don't want to reach a conclusion just yet, it's complicated.
But that's why we're providing this two oper, if you read it, there's two options. Keep the trees, the easier option, replant a lot of trees, the less easier option.
And it's kind of like Bob Hohny said when he was leaving about me and the trees. The fact was that I really argued about cutting down those trees. We were in the planning commission process of discussing it, and before it even got to the city commission, they started cutting down all the trees.
Right.
So that they couldn't be controlled by any decision that the city made. And so they just cut them all down, and I was out there taking pictures, and they kept cutting them. I called Laura, I called everybody, we couldn't stop them because it was private land.
Before then.
Yeah.
Because there is no provision in place that told them they couldn't. We want to install that provision now so that doesn't.
So it's all wasteland now.
Okay, next.
One, one other point there, on your page one of the, uh, code amendments, you talked briefly about some 6,000 square foot lots.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Is, is there a, is that a small number or significant number?
Six thou, 6,000 square feet?
Yeah, I think in fact the property line is some, there's some additional reduction in density at the property line, so from 5,000 to 6,000. So through lot averaging, those would be the larger lots at the property line, but really just from 5,000 to 6,000.
Okay.
So lot averaging is still alive, right?
Kinda. You'll see in a few minutes.
Okay. Okay. So the next one is the northern property line. This is this quality of site plan and design review, so the berm and the extra landscaping, but with the reduced setback.
So when we talk about these property lines that are border on the north or the south, it wasn't real clear to me on the s, on the south side, is it just one row or is there an L shape that comes down someplace else that makes it, it's on two different boundary lines? You know what I'm saying? Like the trees we were just talking about on the south line?
Mm-hmm.
Is along the golf course?
Mm-hmm.
And Old Acres Road.
Correct.
But does that turn and go down Beaver Creek at all?
I'm gonna go back for a second.
I've never seen that.
No, it is, it is just right at the property line, at Old Acres.
Right alongside of where the, well, the picture shows it.
Yeah.
On page two, it, it shows it's right across from Old Acres Road, but it, it doesn't show the corner.
It's right, it's, it's right here, I'm sorry, um, maybe, can you use your, so this, uh, oh, sorry, the, uh.
Just getting about this, where it's not a straight line?
So the, the boundary is, is right, it starts right here at, at Beaver Creek and runs along the southern property.
Okay, that, so the south one is just a one straight line?
Mm-hmm.
Now, as you move to the north, where the north line?
Yeah.
That's a pretty jagged line.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, and that, so that boundary covers multiple sides of the concept plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, um, yeah, so let me go back to the, so this is that looking at, really, it's I call it the balance of quality versus quantity, and so we reduce the quantity and up to the quality. Let me know if you have any comments related to that.
Okay, so it's 25-foot setback to residential uses, um, do you, do you recommend that the parking lot is near the residential uses or can you put the building right up to the?
If you can, but once again, this is a, I call this the Lego area, I mean, you are just fitting your buildings in, in that space, it's not the BPA line and your roads and.
And what's the setback on a building in that zone?
The setback in the zone?
The setback for a building?
For, on the normal CI zone?
Yeah.
I'll have to take a look, but it's, I think it's, uh, 20, I think it's the same setback, but we've, um, increased the level of landscaping. Let me take a look, let me take a look.
So it'd be like 45 feet that it could be from a property line to a building?
Yeah, let me take a look.
The rear setback in the CI zone is 10 feet, corner's 20 feet, um, no interior side and a front yard is 20 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask what you mean by visual buffer? Are you referring to like trees?
This is trees, there's also a berm, so like you have a little bit of a berm and then you have the trees, so you have kind of, as, you are getting it kind of both physically, and then you have a fence, you have a berm, a fence and trees, it's like a layered effect to visually block, I think.
I see those little trees, I'm going, little trees starting off or, it takes 20 years to mature.
And I think that's why you have, you're, you're layering on, right? It's not just one thing, you're layering the berm, you're layering the fence, you're layering the trees, you're layering the landscaping. Uh, you know, I think these build, these are supposed to be uses that are inside of a building. I know on our end for planning, um, you know, just a lot like, uh, you know, having a neighbor as an office nights and weekends, um, you sometimes have a lot less impact than if your neighbor was a single-family home. So, you know, you, uh, you have different impacts when you have, and you, when you, whatever your zone neighbor is. And, you know, for, you have, sometimes you have more this way and less this way, and it's kind of a balance. So, you know, we really are looking at a more compatible industrial zone, because we're really looking at putting those uses inside buildings, um, when you are neighboring, and then as a neighbor, you, you should not be feeling those impacts as much.
Is this a representation visual of what it's gonna look like? Or is this something from another scene?
Yeah, no, I mean, we, we are, we don't design buildings, so Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning used this, this description as an example of what a building could look like in the CI zone, so I, as all good staff, as I repurposed, uh, an existing, uh, photo from a previous.
I, I only asked because I saw that green area in front of it with all the.
No.
Scotch blue, and I'm going, okay.
And this is just a, a typical example.
Wait, look at all that.
Luckily, that's an invasive species. So that, um, this is just a typical example of a campus industrial building.
And I did want to correct myself, Christina was correct, in our existing CI zone, there is a, uh, buffer of 25 feet if you are a budding or a residential or commercial.
Mm-hmm. So what this does is it clear and objectively defines what that buffer is, that qualitative aspect. I call that, this is the site plan and design review criterion.
Because under current code, it could just be 25 feet of grass.
Yeah.
And it's for the benefit of the adjoining residential owners on the opposite side of the.
Yeah, I mean, it's a plan on their property, but it's meant to be this layered visual buffer of landscaping and a berm.
To hide the building that they're, building, right?
Well, you're not gonna completely hide it, but you know, you're gonna soften its impact.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so I'm not hearing any comments right now?
No, I, I think just as it is.
Yeah. So the next one was the definition of warehouse, so right now that is our existing definition, that when you, uh, associated storage and distribution with a permitted use is allowed. And we actually had this exact situation came to the city a couple of months ago where someone wanted, was curious about wholesale distribution and it was not allowed in the zone.
Did I understand that that was allowed and allowed falls in the heritage area? I mean, some, we were talking one time about vegetables preparation, if somebody wanted it.
Yeah, so, um, there's many different permitted, we did, also did a little bit of that hybrid approach, like we did in the mixed-use corridor here, we kind of allowed some, but, but once again, uh, warehousing and distribution not associated with permitted use, I think is a conditional use in that zone. So we separated those two uses as being different things. And so in this zone, we're not making a conditional use, we're just not permitted it when you have distribution and warehousing that's not associated with a permitted use, because we know that that's a low jobs, uh, number. We just don't even want to go down that path. We want to really encourage jobs that can, I mean, businesses that can produce high, high value and high quantity jobs.
I don't know, that Fred Meyer Warehouse is pretty busy with lots of employees. I used to work out there.
So the next one.
I had a question on that one, actually. So, uh, does that include the storage of materials being used to make?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, if, if it's associated with the permitted use, it's, it's it's, it's not warehousing and distribution would be you're taking things offsite, bringing them onsite and then taking them offsite again. You're not really involved in the production of them.
Bringing things offsite, assembling them and then taking them offsite.
Is, is a permitted use because assembly is permitted in the zone.
So what, what you just asked, did you say that the wareha, that's not warehousing to bring the product in to work on it?
If you're constructing or assembling something, the distribution or storage that you need to assemble or produce it is all part of the permitted use.
Was that mainly due to people concerned about trucks and delivery? Or was it just, again, wanting more jobs and that?
Yeah, we really, I mean, Elizabeth Decker was really, really looking at high value and high number of jobs production. And once again, I think this goes back to the question that Commissioner Grail had is, if we allow it as a permitted use and someone comes in, we allow it. So if there's things we wanna preemptively not allow because we don't think they meet the vision of the plan, we need to do it as part of this process.
So, so the, I guess the warehousing of raw material also, I'll call it, whether it's plastic, wood or whatever. You're assuming that when it's delivered to this site, it will be stored inside of a building? Or can some of that raw material?
We have, remember, we have a cap on how much outdoor storage is allowed. We have a cap on how much outdoor storage is allowed. Once again, we don't wanna have someone take up acres and acres and acres to store outdoor goods because once again, that's reducing our jobs per square foot. So we do allow some outdoor storage with the caveat of a cap. We do allow warehousing and distribution if it's associated with what you're assembling or making.
What if it's, what if it's highly automated manufacturing with hardly any employees? With the manufacturing?
Yeah, we don't get involved with employees because it's gonna be very hard to track.
Okay, so there's no employee density requirements?
No, and I'll tell you why we've chosen not to do that as a city. Is that you're making a business turn in. Either A, you turn it in once and they change and then everyone feels like they got, you know, bait and switched. Or two, you're requiring people to turn it in yearly and then you're requiring staff to review it and then to bug them because they haven't turned it in. And then what happens if they get below a certain number? Do you kick them out? I mean, like, there's just, it, it's just really problematic to track employee numbers based on.
As long as it's manufacturing.
Yeah.
And they're using what they're bringing in and before they ship it back out.
Yeah, I mean, you do track numbers for like tax credits and the resolution is you don't get the tax credit. It's not, you have to vacate the building you own. So that's, that's where we're a little bit different than other things you might track employees for like.
But I need you to, I'm like a business license, I have to report how many employees.
And that's just data, that's just statewide data.
Okay.
Yeah, that goes into a statewide metric. I mean, data that, that economists and people use, we don't.
One of the methods of controlling outdoor storage is, is there a lot of space? And it sounds like in, in, in the industrial end of the north, there is a lot of space under power lines. So there may be a lot of area that could be used for storage, which would get considerably large piles of raw material, wood, cement, whatever they're building. It, it almost sets them up as a industrial park. It's gonna assemble and use materials to make a finished product. So where do you send, where do you store the raw materials? And where do you store the final product? You know, somebody orders a hundred of these widgets and oh, we want them all shipped at the same time. Finished products may be stored or warehoused. I'm just.
Yeah, so you can store inside a building. It's the cap of outdoor storage we have. And once again, we just, we want good efficient use of land and inefficient use of land, this may not be the best zone for your business if you want large, large, large acres of outdoor storage.
But what about unusable land like he's mentioning? Under power lines where you cannot put a building?
You can still put all your parking lots there too. All your, all your fleet storage.
You'll still maintain the limits on outdoor storage.
Yeah, all your fleet storage. I think the, the, you bring up a good point. I think the, the key thing is, is if we allow unlimited outdoor storage, we very well may get someone coming in and suddenly we have five acres of RV storage.
Oh, yeah.
And is that really what we wanted in this district?
Under power lines where, you know, we wanna use that as much as possible.
That's the hard part is that balance of, we're trying to reduce permitted uses that we think are not gonna be adding the jobs value. But we're, you know, we're, we're trying to balance because we, we aren't saying this type of business. We're saying we have large, broad definitions of what is a permitted use in the CI zone. We have restrictions on the outdoor storage, restrictions on the warehousing. So we're, we're making some guesses of the outliers. And so I do know that if we want good use of this finite land, we, we really should be making sure we restrict the extreme, underdeveloped types of uses. And as we move forward on this process, if we need to shift a little bit and add something here and shift there, but I would really, just having seen kind of on the firsthand level of if we remove the twenty-five percent outdoor storage or the warehousing or the distribution, we will get low value use. And then I, you know, then, gosh, I would just be really sad for our community that we would just have a low employee. I mean, those businesses are lovely, but they just don't provide the number of employees we really are, are aiming for.
I forgot, I, I just not mentioned here, what's the height restrictions on the buildings up there?
Um, I can take a look, I don't, I don't have it memorized.
It's not critical, I'm just wondering, is it?
It's a couple, a couple stories.
Only a couple stories, not like a ten-story office structure?
No, maybe five, four or five.
They have office employees, that brings a lot of employees.
Yeah. I can take a look, I think it's maybe fifty, forty-five, forty-five, yeah. Okay, so my, is there any comments related to this definition of warehousing?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'm pushing the wrong thing. Uh, the map change request from Mr. Edgar.
Let's, let's keep it manufacturing.
This is to Paul Edgar and Terry Emmer. Yeah, it seems like it's going along with what the concept plan has been for a long time. Here, months before we're seeing the finish line or whatever, we rip it all up and start over and it doesn't sound like it.
Right, I agree. It's too far along.
God, what he was asking for. It's one property, it's Emmer's trying to make a better housing. Okay. And a little sliver only because it's Emmer's property. Okay. Nor the reason.
Okay, and the last one, oh, the zoning maps. And then let me reiterate what I'm hearing for home occupation. You let me know if I'm missing something. I'm hearing, yes, you wanna look into more opportunities for cottage industry or just job creation. We'll keep it broader right now inside the residential districts. I'll look at kind of what I would see as clear and objective questions to ask, kind of issues related to those. I'll look to see kind of how we would approach it the other way, which is like an industrial district where residential is permitted and how that works with our cons, you know, our concept plan. You know, what, the concept plan doesn't have a lot of direction here. So this is the, you know, I'll look back to what direction it does have and maybe kind of infer what, what I think would be implementing. And then what else? Those are what I'm seeing right now, what I'll get back to the planning commission on.
Both Dirk and I were at most of those meetings that were held up at the library. Did we speci, I can't recall, did you specifically ask them about cottage industry? We talked about transportation and everything else.
And it was in the, one of the survey questions that we had after meeting.
Survey?
Not a lot.
Hardly anybody answered surveys.
And that's, I think that's the key is I don't have a lot of direction either way. If I had like, you know, fifty people saying no, I'd say fifty people said no. If I had fifty people say yes, I can say that, but I just don't have, I don't have a lot of direction from the plan. I don't have a lot of direction from the process. So I'm really, you know, looking for more direction.
I can't remember who asked it earlier or suggested it, but again, we only, I remember the vote, through only three hundred feet do we advise people to changes. But there's people further out Beaver Creek, maybe it was Elizabeth herself, but people further out Beaver Creek, that's, the traffic's gonna impact on that whole area there. Do we, are we still only reaching out to three hundred feet within this concept plan? Or have we sent out the cons, the, the, what did you just call it? The?
Survey.
Survey. Did that reach out? I didn't see anything in the Oregon City News. I pick it up weekly to let people out further know. Or how did we reach out and get those people to tell us about that?
God, isn't that the great, how do we get people to get involved? It's the ultimate, you know, we are, we have, you know, we met with a Beaver Creek hamlet and we've tried, you know, we've, we've involved as many people in Beaver Creek Hamlet in the eBlast. Beaver Creek Hamlet folks did attend both meetings. I, I do, you know, we do wanna make sure we reach out to as many people as possible that can be involved. And we, we have gone through some public outreach. But what I, I guess what I'm saying is we just don't have a lot of direction either way. So we're really looking at the planning commission on staff level is, you know, provide us direction for next steps.
When's the next public meeting?
In two weeks, September twenty-third.
Cause I'm, I'm preparing right now for Raymond on the Oregon City News, an article about communications in the city. How do you reach people? They don't read the newspaper when they, all they do is chit chat. They don't look at the Oregon City website or anything. How do you reach out to people to tell them that we're having these meetings?
We also did, Christina mentioned some methods that we use for outreach, but we also do, do we do stuff in the trail news?
Trail news, we have two signs on Beaver Creek of the concept plan page. We wanted to make sure we put a physical sign up so people who drive back and forth on Beaver Creek Road were able to see that. So we tried.
A big one.
It's a pretty, actually, it's a pretty big sign. And then go out there, take a look.
Social media on days of meetings, we're for meetings too.
We have one going each direction.
So you, it's not, the sign isn't parallel with the road? It's so that people, okay.
I haven't taken it in a long time, so.
Cause if it's this way, nobody's gonna see it.
I think it's perpendicular so you can see it, yeah.
Trail news only goes to Oregon City residents, correct? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, there is no one good avenue. So I think what we're saying is that we've tried lots of avenues.
Yeah.
Well, at the meetings, it seemed like there were more Beaver Creek people than city people. Yeah, they were, they were the ones yelling. They can bring rock and fruit, but.
So.
So two weeks at the high school?
No, here.
It's gonna be here.
Yeah.
This meeting, public outreach, like a presentation.
We're now in the legislative hearings process. So we're, you know, we're at planning commission level hearings process.
No more of those, public out.
Yeah, I mean, any, any public engagement is through the planning commission hearings or any future open houses will be sponsored by the planning commission. So let me know if, if, once again, I think I'm gonna reiterate real quickly before. I'm hearing that you wanna learn more about additional job opportunities in the residential zones.
Yes.
You, I will get the information in the record about that two thousand and eleven meeting. And I'll kind of lay out kind of what opportunities there are. And I am meeting with the Caulfield Neighborhood Association on September twenty-fourth, I believe, so I can bring this up. I don't know if I'll be able to have this topic ready for in two weeks. It may be in an October meeting. Just know, I, I wouldn't wanna have it ready if it's not, you know, if I haven't got a chance to talk to people. But it'll either be available, it'll be there tied onto next meetings agenda if I'm able to, I think, get all the information we need or it'll be in the, the October meeting.
Beaver Creek's been really hot on this as we've seen at some of those. How many people attended the meeting that you made the presentation at on Beaver Creek?
In January?
Hamlet, was it in January? Were there very many people there?
Forty-five, six.
Really?
There was a lot of people.
That's more than some of our neighborhood association.
There was a fair amount, yeah.
And did they, were they verbal?
They were verbal very much, yeah.
Okay. And do you bring up the concept of the, um, God, I'm losing it tonight, of the cottage?
No, cause this was an initial meeting that looked at the bigger process and really hoping people to get involved because there's so many issues, right? You know, how, how you get in, stay involved. And what I'm really trying to do is anybody, if you talk to anybody interested in this process, tell them to add their name under the contact us page of the project website. I take all those names and before any eBlast is sent out, I update them. And I've been sending eBlasts out now for any planning commission meeting showing all the agendas and the topics. And we'll continue to do that until this Beaver Creek Road concept plan area is adopted. So please encourage anybody interested to get involved through that in the initial way and then come to the meetings or write public comment or call me as a planner to talk.
May I ask, what was the number one concern of theirs that evening?
Transportation.
That's what I figured. Beaver Creek Road.
So I think I have direction from everybody.
Okay, so I'm, I'm back to what you wanted, the final clarification on, on that. Want to make sure that that retail?
Retail, yes, yes.
Part of that.
Sorry, I have that. Yes. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience with all the questions I have.
It's a legislative process, will take as long as we need to get it right.
So many years, it's got so much in my head about it.
All right. I'm all done.
Okay. All right. Oh, now it's, now it's the Pete show. So hopefully this will be a little simpler. Let's see, this is, let's see.
So as part of the adopted code that we just went into effect on August second, most of that code has to do with the equitable housing code amendments and there were some other things as well. What we're bringing before you tonight is just some cleanup items. We're avoiding major substantive changes to the code at this point. We're just talking about cross-references, emissions, clarifications, typos and that sort of thing. There is one exception to that, which has to do with food cards. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. And why are we doing this now? Mostly because we haven't implemented code. We want it to work well for housing and we wanna fix these, fix these things now while, while, while the iron is hot. And so I'll just jump into these. With respect to lot size reduction, so we're not changing any of the regulations there, but we did have some rounding things that needed to be taken care of. So what we're saying here is that when we have twenty-five percent of the lots in a subdivision eligible for this lot size reduction, if we end up with a fraction, we're gonna round down. And, and that's what that's all about. So that will assure that we have, you know, seventy-five percent of the lots are gonna be at exactly or above the minimum lot size.
Before you move from that, I had this question for Laura earlier. I talked to a few of the city commissioners. I think some of them didn't realize that was twenty-five percent of the lots could be ten percent or less. Cause I know our planning commission voted on it twice here and moved it on, then danced it back and then we sent it back again. But I, from what I just gathered, from what Laura said, it's twenty-five percent of the lots can be up to ten percent below the average. And I don't think that's what the city commissioner or I ever understood on this.
No, that was from the planning, the planning commission recommendation. The quarter of the lots are eligible, the rest have to be.
Which planning commission? Was that the previous one? Cause I remember it went down from three to two or three to four to, something like that.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was the, one of the most recent changes from the previous planning commission.
The previous planning commission?
Yeah.
Cause I don't remember that. I think we voted something different. I'd have to check the records because when I asked like Denise and other people, they don't recall that.
Well.
This is the same one that's been swirling around for a while.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it is what was the suggestion from the planning commission. What, which, which part of it do you think is an error?
That it wasn't twenty-five percent of the lots could be ten percent or less. That's what I was trying to remember the vote and I didn't have time to look it up. We were talking mainly because of the Wheeler Farms and all the other things that came up because as a result of that fiasco, that we were saying that there needs to be a better control on that.
Well, it is more restrictive with this twenty-five percent rule. It definitely is more restrictive. It's not just a straight average of ten percent.
I wonder if we know where the minutes are when that vote took place, what it was that we, our, because we voted on it twice here on the planning commission about that.
What do you think that you voted on? Or what do you think is, so previously the code said?
I thought it was only like ten or fifteen percent of the lots can be reduced.
Yeah, previously the code said that an unlimited number of lots could be under the zoning minimum provided, could be twenty percent below the zoning minimum. So if you're a ten thousand square foot lot, you could have an eight thousand square foot lot and you could have as many eight thousand square foot lots as you wanted, provided the average to be ten thousand. So you can have one giant lot and lots of smaller lots. And so the, this code amendment came up a few times and the most recent adoption adopted the recommendation of the planning commission, which was let's, twenty percent is too small, so let's limit it to just ten percent smaller. So rather than eight thousand square foot lot in this scenario of nine, and, and let, instead of unlimited lots below ten thousand, you can only have twenty-five percent of lots. But the provision that, and that's what was adopted. We can send you a list of the meet, well, there were so many meetings. I mean, we can look into it if you want. But what Pete's talking about is when you do the math, when we normally do things and round things, you know, if it's like above a point five, you round up and you round down. We wanna make sure it's perfectly clear that you cannot round up so you have actually twenty-six percent of the lots because you did rounding error. So that's what we're doing is we're making sure that this provision is even stronger.
Right, so if you have twenty-eight point eight lots, that's twenty-eight lots, it's not twenty-nine.
For my fellow commissioners, what this was, it went back and forth many times. We voted on it a couple of times because the mayor sent it back to us. We had a situation where somebody was bringing in and they had two under the wires that were like thirty-five thousand square feet or something like that. So they wanted to have R eights and the whole neighborhood complained because once they got into it, they averaged all the lots down to R sixes and fives. They wanted, they said they were averaging to R eight, but they were taking into consideration those two huge lots under the wires that you couldn't use. So this has been bantered about for a long time. And I thought, I know we voted in the majority several times to limit it more. I think some of the commissioners thought that we had limited it more.[1757.28] So this confused me. So I'm sorry if it's, I'm asking questions, but that's why.
So 25% can be smaller, but they can only be 10% smaller?
Correct.
Okay, they can't be half size?
Right.
10% is reasonable, and then 25%, it's better than...
Than unlimited?
Yeah, unlimited, that's crazy.
I think the city commissioners will probably work on this one more than we will.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, next one, we had some definition changes. Principally, uh, food cart is changed to food unit, and that's based on a recommendation from the Oregon Mobile Food Association, which is an industry group. They wanna make sure that our regulations and terminology is not in conflict with state health regulations and things of that nature. And so those changes, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that. And then similarly, we had a calculation methodology in our, uh, definition section, 1704-808, and we're clarifying the roundings in that, too. To make sure that when you talk about minimum net density and maximum net density, we're getting to the right numbers. Single-family attached, which is townhomes, and three-to-fourplex residential design standards, we just had a, we had to make the right re, cross-reference for front porch requirements for townhomes, 'cause there's single-family attached product that is required to have a porch. So we referenced that section in the single-family design standards. Mixed-use corridor district, uh, we're clarifying for residential uses, we wanted to make sure that one to two residential units are also permitted in that mixed-use zone as long as it's in conjunction with a non-residential use. And then bus stops, i.e. the ones that are on the side of the road that people are waiting at, um, wanted to clarify that those are not included in the definition of passenger terminals. So that would be a conditional use, we don't wanna apply that kind of review process to bus stops.
How did that come up, Pete, was that because it's a definite...
Laura, do you know the answer to that one?
Um, it says passenger terminals is the definition, so just in case people are curious.
Terminal down there?
It's meeting, yeah, that bus terminal down there, but I was just looking at it thinking, a bus stop kinda falls under our definition of passenger terminal.
Right.
And we don't want it to, because we want bus stops everywhere.
Yeah, okay.
And they're, and they're in the right-of-way most of the time, too, so. Next one, mixed-use downtown. We had inadvertently left the, uh, list of parks, playgrounds, and uses that are actually conditional in the permitted use section of the code, so we're taking those out. The intention always was that those be conditional uses, typo.
Uh, stepping back to that, sorry. Does that mean, like, in the, this is different than the Willamette Falls Heritage Area? That, 'cause there will be probably some centers down there, neighborhood centers, concerts and things?
Um, I'm not sure what it says about...
'Cause I know that's part of the plans, I think.
So the planning commission made a recommendation to, rather than cross-reference another zone, copy all the text over, and so we did that. And now it lists parks as permitted and conditional. So we gotta get rid of the copy that wasn't supposed to list it.
So it's not saying you can't have...
So we're not changing anything, we just wanna clarify because we copied everything over, and we copied over something that was also listed as conditional? Or something that was also listed as permitted? So we don't wanna change anything, we just wanna go back to how it used to be.
Okay, just clarifying for my own.
Yeah, no.
Good point.
It's good.
Next is, uh, the institutional district, we're just cross-referencing what is already in the Site Plan and Design Review Chapter, which requires a 15% minimum landscaping amount. Administration and Procedures, we wanted to clarify that completeness review, which is a 30-day state mandated, allowed period for the city to make a decision on whether an application is complete enough to move forward through the review process, that that period does not begin until all review fees and a one-page land use application form is turned in. Anything else can come later, but that's the, uh, that's what we wanted to clarify. Oh, that's redundant, sorry. Off-street parking and loading, um, so there's a, currently, there's a provision that talks about how, um, parking has to be for customers and clientele, um, and cannot be for count, when you do the calculations for minimum and maximum parking for a particular site, that, that not include, um, areas for storage of vehicles, and fleet vehicles, for examples. In mixed-use employment zones, general industrial zones, and campus and industrial zones, that is always an issue, because if you were the transportation facility for the school, or you were the police department, or some other public use, or you had to have storage of vehicles that aren't necessarily gonna fit neatly into this minimum and maximum calculation, and that, that ought to be exempt. Um, and so subsequently, that would be, um, calculated differently, separately.
So what's exempt? Like the police department and other ones, is that what you're saying?
What it says...
'Cause I'm thinking of like Elks Parking Lot, or, or churches, or things like that.
Yeah, let me find that section for you.
There's a few on Malala Avenue.
And...
Can you repeat your question one more time?
Well, I'm, I was thinking fleet parking calculation, but clarified perimeter and building buffer for landscaping standards. I'm thinking of parking lots, like, I think there's a few churches on Malala, or...
You know, when you have a parking lot that's behind, so we require parking lots generally behind the building. You, sometimes, there's the building, and then you go through this drive aisle, and then the parking lot's in the back. So it, it's saying that ne, next to the drive aisle, where you don't have any parking stalls, you don't need the tree every 35 feet, a trub every four feet, and the ground cover.
Okay, good.
So it, in other words, you're not mitigating, there's not a big parking lot you're mitigating, you have a little drive aisle, so you don't need the visual buffer. So it's more related to some of the finer details of how do you get back to the parking? And if it's just a drive aisle, do you really need a buffer landscaping? And same with the building buffer, do you need it? We also require a building buffer between the parking lot and the building, and this skinny little drive aisle that gets you back to the parking lot, do, do you need that? So...
So the fleet parking calculation, what is that?
We may need to look at this stand a little more detail, uh, when I'm looking at it. Um, what we're saying in the code is that fleet parking is included in the minimum and maximum parking calculations for all zones except for G.I., C.I., and M.U.E. It doesn't talk about who owns the site, whether it's publicly owned or privately.
I was thinking of car dealerships like Subaru Downtown, that doesn't impact that.
So that would be, that would be calculated.
So the question we're trying to answer is, how does fleet parking fit into, does it, does it absolutely have to fit into your, under your maximum parking counts? I guess it states that it has to fit under your minimum, but you don't, also don't count, um, ones you don't use for... Let me rephrase.
Is this a remedy looking for a problem? Has this been a problem before?
It's not a big problem, no, definitely not a big problem. I think it's gonna, it came up with the police station.
Ah, police station.
But their calculations, the fleet did fall under their minimum and maximum, but we didn't have a minimum and maximum for police stations, so we had examples. It's gonna come up for our public works facility? Like how, when you have fleet, so that's why there are exemptions for industrial. It's basically like, you know, if you have an auto zone or something, and you ha, I don't even know if they have cars, but whoever has, um, cars associated with the business during the day, they're gone. So that space is available for customers. But if it's a real fleet, and you have a big area, and it's there all the time, then that's just a lot of extra parking spaces. And is it really the right zoning designation if we exempt that from the maximum parking calculations on Malala Avenue? It's probably not the right fit. If you, if you're, uh, that kind of use, it should probably be somewhere where, like, you're industrial or something like that, depending on the use.
Where you park all the trucks all the time?
Right, industrial. So that, so the exemption is like, you know, we want the fleet storage fall within the maximum, but we also don't wanna apply it to all these industrial zones, 'cause that's what storage is for.
So this question came up for the police department, it's not a private lot for the city for, for all the police cars?
They have two parking lots. They have a fenced parking lot for the police cars and like the big car thingies that they use to do their police work. And so, um, when we did the analysis, all of that fit within their min and max, but what if it hadn't?
Wow.
So, um, y, yeah, it's not a real big problem. We never really see this, 'cause it never really comes up.
But as we get to be a big city the size of Portland, it will be.
But it's a question, and if we can't answer it, we should try.
Yeah.
If we, yeah.
I just didn't understand, thanks for explaining.
And, uh...
Knowledge. I am, just packing up my little brain. Little room left.
So in our supplemental zoning chapter, there's a number of, of things that we wanted to correct. Um, one, we just talked about the landscaping adjacent to drive aisles being distinct from parking spaces within parking lots. Uh, the second is, when you talk about a building projection, which could be an overhang or a gutter, or part of a building that is not the main wall that can project, they, those are allowed to project into setbacks, which is the distance from the property line to the building wall, but exclusive of any public utility easement or other kind of easement. A public utility easement is always going to override a setback if it's larger than the setback is. We're not allowed to place any kind of structures in there other than landscaping and fences and things that have a disclaimer on them that says that the public utility that has a right to access that easement can, with proper notification, remove those structures. But that type of thing is very difficult to do for above-grade permanent structures in buildings. So just wanted, that's something that's always been a policy, it's just being clarified. The next item has to do with retaining walls, which you've seen a, a variance application in this regard. So we're saying that retaining walls and the safety railings on top of safety retaining walls, so subgrade retaining walls and safety railings, or fall hazard protection, as it's called in the code, are gonna be exempt from the retaining wall height measurement.
And what does that mean, or impact with the decision that was made here a few months ago? I understand they had to redo the sidewalk and other stuff. But, uh, what does that mean in relation to what our decision was?
That decision?
It means...
They would probably not have to come before you for a variance with this code amendment.
So that wall that went down below, or the railing, they wouldn't have had to come to us?
Correct.
Even though I heard, I heard that they had to go through some other, 'cause they, ADA, if it wasn't ADA approved?
Yeah, building code and ADA requirements.
That was outside us?
Are exclusive, yeah, they're separate, separate requirements.
I think I read something, I, I read everything, uh, you sent me. Was there something in there about residential, below-grade retaining walls can be six feet without a guardrail or any kind of fence above it?
Retaining walls completely below the elevation of the right-of-way may be up to six feet in height. Uh, minimum fall protection required by the building officials, such as railings, is not included in the height of a retaining wall. But we didn't, we didn't include anything new with respect to residential.
Does that mean you wouldn't need a retain, uh, railing?
No, it just means it doesn't get included in the six-foot.
It's just not part of...
'Cause you include the railing, and it's like a couple feet, your six-foot's not actually six-foot.
Okay, okay.
Right, right, right.
We'll look at the wording.
Yeah, I got a little confused, but that doesn't take much.
Mobile food carts, I'm gonna talk about a little more detail on the next slide. And then, um, we just had a long discussion about home occupations and commodity sales, and looking at, at that definition in more detail for the purposes of not just Beaver Creek Road, but potentially citywide, yeah. Uh, with respect to the mobile food carts section of the code, we have transitory mobile food carts, which are, you know, three carts up to five hours a day. And then non-transitory mobile food carts are permanent mobile food carts, which can be approved through Site Plan and Design Review. Um, and so the comments that we got from the OMFA, um, were pretty comprehensive, and you'll notice a lot of strikeouts in this section. Uh, changing the word cart to unit, uh, removing conflictive, conflicting language for the health regulations. So a lot of the language in there that had to do with the size of your potable water tank and the size of your discharge tank, all of that has been taken out because it's already regulated under the county health inspection. We wanted to make, uh, clarify that the standards, the, the majority of the standards that are, have to do with Site Plan and Design Review, such as fencing, accessory, and temporary structures, lighting, those are gonna apply to external site features, like if you put up a cover over a picnic table, or you have a generator that you need to screen of some kind. And if you're gonna have a fence around the outside of it, you know, those are gonna apply to the site, but not to the individual carts themselves, units themselves. So exterior building material requirements would be applied to an individual food unit. And, uh, there are a few other regulations that are, just didn't make sense to apply to the actual individual units. But we would apply a screening requirement for a generator, uh, to assure that it's both aesthetically screened as well as, um, and screened in terms of noise, potentially. Then for permanent food cart sites, the owner of the food cart site is gonna apply for the permit. The individual cart owners are gonna be issued business licenses to operate. And so that one site permit could be used for, to foster multiple business licenses over the course of a year.
Pete, did the, um, OMFA, the first dot there?
Yeah.
Were those suggestions, and are, were they like the county telling us what to do with our food scraps? I mean, was this suggestion, we just adopted some of those as good ideas?
Um, it was a lot of, a lot of good conversations with, uh, the representative from OFMA, OMFA, working with public work staff as well as planning staff on this. It wasn't sort of a heavy-handed thing at all. It was just say, hey, you wanna, probably wanna think about this because some of these things are already regulated, and you wanna be able to streamline your process and still respect the Site Plan and Design Review process that you have. So on our side, we were pushing back a little bit, saying, look, the city has a right to regulate locally to a minimum level of, you know, Site Plan and Design Review standards. But yeah, we get it, it doesn't make sense to apply some of these standards in, in one, 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 in this situation.
So they're not a state regulatory, they're more...
No, they're an industry group that is familiar with the state standards. But we did contact Cleckamas County as well to see what their process was and what their health inspection regulations already say, just to make sure that, you know, we're not missing something. Site Plan and Design Review Chapter, some s, small revisions here with respect to applicability of the standards to manufactured home parks. That was implied in the manufactured home park chapter, but it wasn't cross-referenced in this, Chapter 1762. We clarified the screening of mechanical equipment, um, to be screened from the public right-of-way, or from a street, um, so that it's easier to make that determination, because that's what we can see from the, and the vantage point of the other side of the street, looking up towards the unit, or towards the site. Then an exemption for, um, specific park uses, um, such as city-owned parks and other recreational park uses that need chain-link fencing. For dock parks, tennis courts, and those types of ballpark uses, we would allow a vinyl or powder-coated chain-link fencing, uh, which is previously, uh, prohibited material.
Oh.
So the next steps on our schedule, and the schedule, the more detailed schedule is tentative, it is in your packet, but this, this is the tentative schedule for moving forward. Tomorrow night, City Commission will be, uh, providing some discussion and guidance to staff on food carts. Not just the standards we've, we've discussed, but also whether to allow them as a, I think they've already decided this, to allow them in the mixed-use downtown area as both transitory and non-transitory uses outside of the design district, so that one's good. So we'll just be talking standards tomorrow night.
Does it matter that this is August 10th and not September 10th?
It does matter. It can be exact when we missed it. So that should be 9:10, thanks, Patty. And, um, and, uh, also, we were discussing the approach... And also, we're discussing the approach to how we want to roll out a public process for development of a short-term rental policy. And we've put together a memorandum for the City Commission on that and we'll be talking about that tomorrow night. We're also, on nine, 18, September 18th, we're going to have another work session on shelters and talking about shelter standards and definitions. And we're really close to that being wrapped up, so I'm feeling.
Shelters meeting, homeless shelters.
Yeah, shelters, not just homeless shelters, but transitional shelters, emergency shelters, warming and cooling shelters, because there are other situations that the city has the authority to declare a state of emergency and suspend the zoning code if need be for whatever situation in response to an emergency situation, not just a homeless situation. But what they would like to do is make sure that the definitions are in the code, even if we're not going to regulate all of those things, because we have an umbrella definition for shelters. And then we want some more nuanced definitions just in there for those things. On October 2nd, we will be having a discussion about the mixed-use downtown height limits. Right now, as you know, we've got a variety of height limits all over. And what we're trying to do is simplify that, but there are a couple of things that have come up. And we want to make sure that if we standardize height limits, we're not automatically creating some sort of additional burden on the transportation infrastructure and the public infrastructure that's needed to service that additional height in the mixed-use downtown area for those units. So we'll be talking about that. And we're going to be looking at some mapping that the GIS department has done in that regard. So that's not decided yet. And then assuming we get clear direction on all those three things and the code cleanup that we discussed tonight, we'll be having a hearing on October 16th, followed by some November hearings. And then in January 2020, we'd be coming back to Planning Commission with some short-term rental code to talk to you about that. That's our tentative schedule for that.
Okay.
Lot averaging in on the 1016 meeting?
That's already been decided, I believe.
But what we just discussed, the clarifying the language.
Yeah, it's not a substantive change though.
Because I don't think the City Commissioners feel they voted on that yet.
Okay.
To approve it.
We can check.
Am I wrong? Did they vote on it?
I believe they did.
The provision of limiting the number to 25% and the 10% reduction, they did vote on.
They did vote on.
This is part of the August, the code amendment package was effective August 2nd, so it was voted on July 3rd.
And that included lot averaging at that time?
July, yeah.
And that was.
Then why did we go over that little bit of it tonight?
Because we wanted to, Pete's correcting, making it explicitly clear how you round when you figure out 25% of the lots. Because normally when you round, if it's above a 0.5, you round up. We want to add a provision that says you can't round up. So you can't get 20s. Because we have our density calculations, when you apply it, it's a little bit harder. It was easy to write the code and then we practiced a little bit applying them through our density calculations and we have min and max densities now. And when you apply the 25%, we didn't want to get a number that would round up to end up being 26%, which we want to be explicitly clear to applicants so that they know they don't get an extra lot.
So the City Commission can't revisit that once they understood the, what the lot averaging percentages were, if they wanted to, since they already voted on it?
They can, this is a code cleanup. I mean, what we're doing right now is, were there any errors or anything that we need to address further? So they can change the lot averaging if you want them to, but they adopted what was requested by the Planning Commission.
Okay, that's all I have, unless there are other questions. And then I was going to talk about the next item.
Okay, any other questions, can we?
No questions.
All right, one second. Technology. There we are. Next item.
Good old heritage tree.
Yes.
You guys must have been excited meeting last Wednesday night.
So the heritage tree code, which is in chapter 12.32, it's been amended over the years. I think the last time we amended it was 2013, shortly after we adopted some revisions to the street tree code as well. But since that time, we've, well, let me just start at the beginning. The purpose of the heritage tree code is to foster voluntary protection for certain types of trees if they meet criteria and are of special importance to the city, either because of their age or their species, their ecological or historical association or resource value. So there's a set of criteria in that code and a process for designation. We've only had five nominations since that time. And so the background on this amendment process was that the Natural Resources Committee really wanted to make sure that the code did not present an impediment to further nominations and try to simplify that process and encourage more of them. So what does that mean?
Pete, so as we all heard at the City Commission last week, as the one lady who was about trees, said she tried to get them in, a couple of these trees that are 312 years old, she tried to get it in two years ago, a year ago, and it was just ignored, is what she intimated. How is this going to work to help?
Yeah, so I'll go into that process. So one of the biggest things is that the requirement in the code for a certified arborist report would not be required anymore. So if an owner wanted to do that voluntarily prior to nominating it, they could. If the City Commission felt that it was absolutely imperative to require that in order to make a decision, they could. But ultimately, the property owners responsible for these trees anyway. And all of the liability associated with the maintenance and care of those trees is still going to reside with the property owner, even though they're designated as heritage trees.
And what happens when it's on public property?
Well.
Like, were you on those trees?
I want to make clear here, and the NRC is also very supportive of this, that public or private, it requires owner consent to designate a tree. And so it's meant to be a voluntary process. This section of code is not meant to be a regulatory document by any stretch of the imagination. It is intended to be a voluntary thing. And for that reason, you know, we wanted to make sure that owner consent's required, including on city and publicly owned property. Once you get through the process, we will record a covenant that permanently protects that tree unless arborist report or other hazard situation necessitates its removal. And so greatly simplifies the process. Some of the definitions been modified and some of the sections reorganized. The notice requirements for all the various parties who would need to be notified, including on any abutting property owner, if it's in the right-of-way, the Natural Resources Committee, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, if the tree's in a park, the county, if necessary, Metro, if necessary, whoever will get proper notice of this process unfolding. And then rather than do these in a rolling basis, the really good idea for NRC head was that they just submit them all prior to the December 31st of the year. And then we will process them as a batch and make all of the recommendations en masse, either prior to or concurrently with April Arbor Day, so that we can make that sort of a big celebratory event. And then one other thing was, okay, what happens if the tree does get removed? Well, we said, what kind of mitigation should be required? So we cross-referenced our standard mitigation table from chapter 1741 that specifies how many trees need to be replaced based on the size of the tree that was removed. And if it's a native heritage tree that was removed, it would have to be replaced with one of the species of trees on the heritage tree eligibility list, which is a really wide range of species. As long as they're, essentially, as long as they're not nuisance species, they're potentially eligible as well. So that's summary of those amendments. Here's an overview of the process.
I mean, Pete, hate to interrupt you on that, but for those who weren't there at the City Commission meeting last week, filled the room with people. So what, is this only to designate a tree? What happens about those trees that haven't been designated, like happened last week? Is there anything in here about protecting our 312-year-old trees and 113-year-old trees?
Right, so.
Is that in here at all, or is that separate?
Property that's not designated or zoned residential is subject, so it's non-residentially zoned property, whether it's city-owned or not, it's subject to the same procedure that is in the code. So we have a type one landscaping review for any tree removal on commercial property or institutional property.
Was that in place before last week, or is that new?
Well, what happened last week was an oversight by the Parks Department.
Can we stay focused a little bit?
Well, no, I'm focused.
No, 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 I'm just.
I want to know if it's in there somewhere.
No, I appreciate that. This is for the designation of heritage trees?
Only designation.
It's only designation, yeah, it has nothing to do.
That's all I was asking, if it.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything to protect some of our older trees.
Right.
Okay, that's all I was asking.
Okay, cool. And this is the process. Very, very generally, but the Natural Resources Committee provides the initial review and recommendation. And that goes to the City Commission. And then, once that decision is made, we provide plaques, there's some certificates, and we add those trees to the website. There's a recordation of a covenant and then an announcement at Arbor Day.
Okay, quick question.
Yeah.
It says that the owner has to nominate a tree. So a publicly owned tree, who's the owner and who's nominated?
Yeah. Well, ultimately, I think that's going to be up to the City Commission to prove whoever would sign the application most likely would be the city manager to nominate.
So could the city manager's a spokesperson, they could nominate a publicly owned tree?
Well, anybody can voluntarily ask for it to be designated, but then it's going to.
Who would they go?
Yeah.
Pardon? Who would they talk to? Would they come in here and say, I want to nominate?
They would use forms that we provide on the.
A member of the public?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which the lady here last week said she tried two years ago, one year ago.
I was wondering if there's a process in place that's easy for a person to find?
It was just ignored.
We will, yeah, we've got forms right now, they're on our website, but we'll update those to reflect the current requirement once it's adopted. And.
Yes, we have a question.
Yeah. So it's a public hearing, yeah.
Back in the room.
So our recommendation is, you know, that you review these amendments, provide some feedback, I'll take notes. There's no formal action required. This is not a land use issue or a legislative decision, but it does get adopted by ordinance because it's a changing part of the code. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I have.
Did you want to address a question?
Oh, yeah, I would. All right, I didn't know if it was just going to be informative or, I did notice that when it says replace by.
Could you, excuse me, could you?
Oh, Dorothy Dolestrid, I'm so sorry. Dorothy Dolestrid, I'm.
And you're a resident of?
I'm a resident of Oregon City.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, Dorothy.
Sorry. Gave the wrong name one time. But anyway, I've been very active on the Heritage Tree Committee. Out of those five, I'm responsible for three. And since then, they go dead in the water because you could not, you had to acquire an arborist report after the big maple tree from Ron Tom's tree fell down and then they reenacted that we need to have an arborist. That tree happened to be under an arborist care and was cabled together. So that kind of was like, why did we change that? It was already under arborist care. Wouldn't it die, it dies, it just happens, you know? However, I did notice in there that when you're replacing a tree by native tree, it's a native species on the list. I would recommend that those wouldn't be hybrid species, like necessarily just one of the ones from the Friends of Trees, because you're getting trees that are going to shrink in size. They're going to be a maximum of about 45 feet tall and some of these trees need to be back to tall trees. You never see these fir trees planted in parking lots anymore. I encourage some of our native trees to be planted. Also, one other thing I noticed when I was reading through it, and I might be wrong on this, Pete, but it said that if by chance a native tree, a heritage tree does come down and it's already been designated, that the new one coming in that they would plant would not have any protection or covenant over it. Is that true?
That was a.
And that was actually a unanimous decision.
It was a unanimous decision. We discussed it at the July meeting and it made sense at the time because that tree is not going to be the size it needs to be to be designated at that point. And it's sort of like, why are you going to put a protection on a two-inch tree and then wait?
Yeah. The reason being, reason being.
Yeah, so, yeah, the group felt that that just didn't, it was very difficult to administer that kind of regulation. The Natural Resources.
Natural Resources Committee, and I swear them 100%, they're a fantastic group.
But I do really understand where you're coming from on that because it occurred to me, well, what kind of protection are you going to provide to whatever replacement tree there is in it? At that point, you kind of have to say, well, that tree has moved on. There are other trees that are potentially eligible, but.
I, I would look at the sinister side of it too, meaning if the tree went down and under, can be various circumstances. There's only, there's only, did they change the amount that the tree is protected for? Because if you cut down a tree, you're only going to get fined $300.
$600.
Okay.
That's been in the code for some time.
$600, I recommend throwing zero in behind that, but you know, I'm always wanting to up the fine for getting, taking down a tree. Because if you're thinking about taking down a, and this has happened, and I can point to spots in other cities that this has happened by developers that said, I'm sorry, you can't remove that city tree, it's protected. And they girdled it and chained them and killed the tree. And he got a fine for it. But he killed the trees. I mean, anything that's put back to there, if it was to put back, wouldn't be protected. So if the city said, well, shame on you for doing that, well, now we have, you have to plant that with another species, native tree. Well, back up over it, you won't be even get a fine. I'm just saying, except there's no protection, there's no protection. And people with a sinister type of attitude can be cleverly say, I never, I do want my house enlarged in there. Gave me $600 to top down this tree, this tree might be worth more than wood. If you know what I mean.
Can I ask you a question? I can't remember, but last week, were you the one who said that you applied for applications for?
Yes, I did, actually, for all.
Why did they refuse it?
Because they needed to have an arbor support. The worst part about it is that they did get an arbor support and didn't re-pull that file back out. That should have been, that should have been, thought to have gone through the review process. That is a horrible tragedy.
And this corrects it? And you feel that this corrects it? These changes?
We could have, those could have been protected trees three years ago, four years ago. And they, they could have, at this point then, when the moth infestation started on the oak, could have, and actually could have been rectified even in its state. It just wouldn't have been as beautiful of a tree. I've got examples of trees that have been cut, oak trees have been cut directly in half. They're going to live another 200 years. They won't look as beautiful, but a tree grows for 300, a tree rests for 300.
What I was asking is, is the previous slide that Pete was showing us. What I was asking is, is the previous slide that Pete was showing us, does those suggestions solve the problem that you experienced?
It might not have solved it, because I, I think, yes, I think it would have. But again, it would be city property, city would have to sign off on it. And I'm preparing several city park portfolios together to nominate multiple trees and stands in our city. Because we need to, we need to set the example as a city that we love our trees more protected. And we need to mock up, we need to mess up, clean up this mess. And we can do it. Not necessarily with this, this is a huge step to get help, people with privately, being able to do, the house, the places on Lynn Avenue, trees on Lynn Avenue, they can't get done because they need to have an arborist report, the woman can't afford it. There's another one where this, it's an incredible red oak, it's fantastic, but this woman lives from hand paycheck to paycheck, she can't afford an arborist to come in. And quite frankly, that tree's worth more than $300 in wood. Same with that walnut tree. So we need to, we need to be able to really do some numbers once on our, you know, private and public properties. We need to set the example as public properties that we are going to be as a city tree, be a wonderful tree steward. And we can do that.
I would just point out, though, you know, arborists do, you know, certified arborists are there, trained, you know, to look at the health of a tree, and that may be of great benefit to an owner. It could, because, you know, they can't always see what's going on inside. And, you know, they may or may not decide to nominate it if they don't know the condition of the tree. It could be both situations, but in this situation, you know, the NRC felt there was a sufficient impediment to further nominations, that it warranted removal from the code.
That's a clarification.
Great, thanks, guys. Is there anything you would advise on this?
You ready?
Oh, that's good.
It seems good. It seems like it probably fits best with the NRC. You know, like, planning is land use, not meaning that we forget trees, but appreciate NRC's performance.
Yeah, they do a lot of great work. DeeDee did a lot of great work on it.
They do far better with trees than, than we probably would.
Yeah, they're, they're a very knowledgeable group. We have Nancy Broshot also helped out. She's a professor with PSU and, and does a lot of tree, urban tree science and ecology studies. She really helped out with this. Lucky to have her. All right, so we'll be taking this back up to the City Commission at some point.
Oh, shall we announce the date?
Can't remember when the date was. I don't think we have a set date on that. Do we do? One moment. December 25th.
It was tentatively September 18th.
September 18th, okay. All right.
And did you need a recommendation from Planning Commission? I guess no, because it's not a legislative file.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments you'd like us to forward?
Give a consensus.
Just on this item, do you want to make a vote to support or not support, or are there any specific comments you want us to tell the City Commission that you said when you reviewed it?
I think we have consensus that we agree.
Do some private discussion and take a vote to support it or not support it.
We can, if you want to do it.
It says no formal action is required, but whatever.
Oh, is there any more comments on it? I agree with everything that they've put together.
And I do too. I think we have consensus on that.
A little too late for some trees, but yeah, it's better for the future.
Well, they're doing something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any new business, is it?
No, we have had quite a few applications submitted for our Planning Commission, and so I haven't seen them yet, but we'll take a look at them and then work with the mayor to get some interviews scheduled. So more to come.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Then I announce the September 9th Planning Commission meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.